Yes, please.
Okay.
Are we taking a knee or?
Yes.
There we go. Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the September 25th, 2017, meeting of the Litchfield Board of Selectmen. We're starting early tonight. We have a heavy agenda. We're -- the board is coming out of a paperwork review, and I'd like to start by asking everyone to rise for a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. The first order of business is review and approval of consent items. In the consent folder, we have the minutes of the September 11th, 2017, meeting. We have an accounts payable manifest for September 19th of $34,001,2765, and September 26th, $62,72619. We have a payroll manifest of September 21st of $52,632, and on the 28th of $51,57672. We have a tax collector reconciliation for August. We have a treasurer reconciliation for August. We have the town clerk reconciliation for August. And we have an appointment of Michael Croto to the Local River Management Advisory Committee. Are there any items that any board member wishes removed from the consent folder? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Perry moves to approve the consent items, seconded by Mr. Brunel. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries 4-0-0. Are there any other additional items that members would like to place on the agenda? Okay, hearing none. We will go to -- now, just notify that we're going to have a public hearing at 6:00, and we will incorporate public input in that public hearing, at that point, I believe. First order of business is the 2016 financial statements presented by Melanson Heath, and we have our reps. Would you come to the mic? I'm sorry, there's only one chair there. If you want to drag up.
Slide one up.
If you wouldn't mind moving the mic to the center.
Sure.
And I'd ask you to introduce yourselves and make your presentation.
Good evening. My name is Erica Lucia. I'm a manager with Melanson Heath. I was responsible for the 2016 audit for the town of Litchfield. This is Frank Byron. He's the principal in charge of the job as well. And tonight, we're prepared to go through the results of the audit with reviewing the financial statements for 2016. If you could please turn to the independent auditor's report. It's the page right after the table of contents. This is what we're hired to do, is to present an opinion on the financial statements, and the town had a clean opinion this year, which is the same opinion as it has had in the past, and it's the best opinion that you can have. If you could please turn to page three. Page three begins the management's discussion and analysis, or the M-D-N-A section, and it runs from pages three to eight, and what it does is it puts into narrative form, or into words, what the number pages say. Instead of reading this to you, though, if we could please turn to page nine. Page nine is the statement of net position, or the entity-wide financial statements. And what it does is it consolidates all of the town's funds into one column, your governmental activities, and it's presented on an accrual basis of accounting, which means that includes your long-term assets and your long-term liabilities. Most of these numbers are fairly similar to what they have been in the past. However, there are a few numbers that I would like to point out to you that had some changes during the course of the year. The first being the net position liability. That is located under your non-current liabilities, about two-thirds of the way down the page. You'll see the net pension liability of $4,923,838. What this is, is a result of Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 68, or GASB 68, which came into effect last year, so this is the second year that it's been reported on the financial statements. And what it is, is it's the town's proportionate share of the New Hampshire Retirement System's total unfunded liability. And I wanted to point this out to you, because this number, it's the second year that it's been reported on the financials, but it increased $1.6 million from the prior year. That's about 50 percent increase from last year to this year. And there's a couple of factors that go into why that increased. However, I would like to note that that increase does not affect your income statement during the current year. What it is, is it's deferred and amortized over five years. If you look to the top of the page, about a third of the way down, you'll see deferred outflows of resources of $1,398,000. What that is, is it's an offset, pretty much, to that increase from last year to this year. There's a footnote on page 28. If you could please turn to page 28, it'll help highlight some of the things that caused the increase from last year to this year. The largest items are the items number two, three, and four on that list at the table at the top of the page. The second item is your net difference between projected and actual investment earnings of $308,000. What that means is that the investments had a poor result from one year to the next. The next item is the change in assumptions, which is the largest factor causing that net pension liability to increase. That net pension liability is actuarially determined, and what they had from one year to the next was a change in the assumptions that they were using. The biggest change was the change in the discount rate. Because of those poor investments, the actuaries changed the discount rate that was being used, and they decreased it from 7.5 percent to 7.25 percent. So what that does is it increases your liability, because they're expecting that your investments are not going to do as well. And then, the next item was the change in proportion of $297,000. The Litchfield's proportionate share of the New Hampshire Retirement System, in 2015, the town's portion was .08 percent, which I know is a small percentage, but the New Hampshire Retirement System's total unfunded liability is $5 billion. So when you change the percentage from .08 percent to what it was in the current year of .09 percent, that is also going to affect the net pension liability that's reported on page nine. So if you could go back to page nine, again, we saw an increase in that net pension liability of $1.6 million. It increased. However, again, it's offset by your deferred outflows, and that increase will be amortized over five years. The other item that I'd like to point out on this page is the second number up from the bottom. It's your unrestricted net position, and it's in parentheses. It's $1,847,171, and it's in parentheses, or negative, because of that net pension liability. That's the largest thing impacting why that unrestricted is in a deficit position. And that is fairly common. If you could please turn to page 11. Page 11 is the governmental funds, and I feel it's a little bit more useful, because it's presented the way that the town maintains its books. There's three different columns, your general fund column, which is your main operating fund, your non-major governmental funds, which is kind of all of your other funds, your special revenue funds, capital project funds, various trust funds, and then a total column. I'd like to direct your attention back to the first column, though, your general fund column, as that is your chief operating fund. And again, as I said before, that's fairly consistent with what it's been in the prior year. However, there's a few items that I'd like to highlight that had some changes. The first is your cash and short-term investments of $9,237,681. That increased $3.6 million from the prior year. However, down, about halfway down the page, you'll see due to the school district, right above the subtotal, of $7,306,898. That also increased $3.2 million during the course of the year. So your cash increased, but it's because your liabilities increased as well, and that, due to the school district, is what the town is going to owe the school district over the next six months. The town operates on a calendar basis, whereas the school operates on a fiscal basis. So that's the second half of the year's assessment for the school. And it really resulted from the way that the assessments were scheduled to be paid out during the year. The schedule is a little bit different than the previous year. Probably the most important number in the financial statements is the third number up from the bottom, the unassigned fund balance in the general fund column of $1,299,656. Bond rating agencies typically like to see this number between 5 to 10 percent of your operating expenditures. The town actually doesn't have any bonds at the moment, but it's something to keep in mind. Right now, the, it's about 40, I'm sorry, 24.6 percent of your operating expenditures. So that's a very strong.
It's working very well.
Fund balance, yes. However, the Department of Revenue has a different way of looking at it. They don't look at it as just your operating budget, but they look at it as a budgetary basis, including the town's operating budget, as well as your school and county assessment. And they like to see it between 8 to 12 percent of that overall budget, and right now, you're at 8.45 percent. So you're within the Department of Revenue's guidelines as well, again, between 8 and 12 percent. And that number, that percentage, is the same as it was last year. And your unassigned fund balance that we were just looking at, that increased about $25,000 from the prior year, and it's been maintaining fairly consistently at that level for the past six or seven years. The town did use fund balance during the course of 2016 for its budget process. However, you were still able to maintain that strong fund balance and increase it by $25,000. So if you could please turn to page 15, I can show you how. Page 15 is the general funds budget versus actual, and it has four different columns. The first two is your original and final budgets, so what you started and ended the year with. The third column is your actual amounts, and the final column is your variance, how you did against that final budget. The top part is your revenues, and the bottom half is your expenditures. Now, that use of fund balance that I was just talking about is about halfway down the page, right above the subtotal of $134,974. So that's what the town used during 2016 for its budget. However, it wasn't used for operating-type items. What it was used was for specific warrant articles. If the town's going to use fund balance, that's, you know, what we like to see, is that it's being used for specific one-time items and not for your operating budget. If you look to that final column, about halfway down the page underneath of that subtotal, you'll see $183,102. That was your revenue surplus for the year, so how you beat the budget with regards to revenues. And that's made up of primarily of positive motor vehicle collections and motor vehicle collections in excess of the budget. Similarly, in that final column, the second number up from the bottom, $42,573. What that represents is departmental turnbacks for the year, so what departments didn't spend. Overall, the final budget, or number on that page, $225,675. That's overall how the town did compared to its budget. So you beat the budget by $225,000. Keeping in mind, though, you did use fund balance of $134,000, so you were able to recoup what you used during the course of the year. And again, if you're going to be using fund balance, that's what, you know, bond rating agencies, the DRR, DRA auditors like to see, is that you're able to recoup what you use. If you could turn to page 16. 16 is your fiduciary funds, or your agency funds, and it's made up of primarily school trusts and various escrows. And again, these numbers are fairly identical to the prior year. The rest of the document is the footnotes to the financial statements, which give a little bit more information on the numbers that we just talked about. So to just kind of summarize what we went through, the town has a strong fund balance and has been consistently maintaining a strong fund balance. You had a revenue surplus and departmental turnbacks, netting to overall beating the budget by $225,000, meaning that you were able to recoup what you used. You don't have any bonds payable, which puts you in a favorable financial position, as well as having that strong fund balance is a favorable position as well. Normally, from here, we would go in and we'd talk about the town's management letter. However, for 2016, the town did not have one. In 2015, there was a management letter which outlined some areas where we felt improvements could be made, because as part of the audit, we don't just look at the numbers, but we look at operating procedures and internal controls to make sure that things are operating effectively. The items that were on last year's management letter was a trustee's report, the MS-9, hadn't been prepared accurately, and this year, we found that that was done properly, so that's no longer an issue. And then, the other item was talking about the ambulance receivable and the large pass-to-balance. However, during 2016, the town implemented a policy and procedure to deal with collections and abatements of old ambulance receivables, so that is also no longer an item. There were some other, just kind of housekeeping recommendations that were made to management during the course of our audit, but those didn't warrant to be put onto a management letter. And that pretty much sums up the financial statements and kind of the key highlights.
So our citizens should be very happy and kind of proud of what we're all doing to manage the affairs of the town, right?
Yep, yep. All of these things point to strong.
I wanted to get that on the record.
Yep. All of these items point to, you know, again, strong financial reserves and also strong management. Again, during the course of our audit, everybody's always very cooperative and very forthcoming when we request information, and again, just good management overall.
Thank you. And I do want to credit the department heads, the town administrator, and the employees of the town, because they've been very, very good at making do with as much as they have. And they've always been, stepped up to the plate and willing to do their jobs and do them well. And we're trying to, we consistently try to manage our affairs within budgets that the town people give us, and so I'm very happy. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Members have questions or comments?
I actually do have a question. With the unassigned fund balance, we're going to call it 1.3 million.
Yep.
You say 5 to 10 percent is usually preferred, and we currently stand at 24.6 percent. But the Department of Revenue sees us at 8.45.
Correct.
If we were going to, say, expend $300,000 of that, and we didn't make it up like we did in the past, how bad does that look? We dropped to about 6 percent. How bad is that?
Well, I mean, you've been, you've been pretty consistent for the last six years, and consistency is good. You're in a good, strong financial position. If you drop $300,000 and you were able to recoup some of that, like you have been in the past, it might not be so bad. However, if the economy turned around and your motor vehicle receipts didn't come in like they've consistently been increasing, then that 300 could actually go down even lower, because you could, you know, have a deficit for the year. So that's what you have to watch out for. If you were to use more, like 300,000 or so, like Erica mentioned, it's advised not to use it just for operating purposes, but more for one-time-only type projects.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, if we were going to do something really large, and we wanted to just.
Right.
Put some money on it to knock it down from the start, or make an early payment or something like that, is it, how bad does it look?
300,000 wouldn't be so bad.
How about a half a million?
Well, I mean, then you're going to have to start watching. You know, the issue becomes a cash flow issue.
Yep.
You know, that certain time, at this time of the year, you've got $9.2 million in the bank.
Right.
But that's not necessarily the case the day before the tax bills go out.
Exactly. Right, exactly.
So somebody would.
That's not the day we want to go out for a bust.
So somebody would have to do that analysis, just to find out what's the least amount of cash you would have during the course of the year.
Yeah, that'd be my concern. I mean, we've been pretty consistent. We've taken out, you know, 100, 130,000 to do one-time expenditures, but we've been able to replace it. So we've been able to maintain the unassigned fund balance. And even, as we saw this year, it grew 25,000. So if we took a big chunk out, I think it would have an impact on our cash flow basis, and I think we'd have a struggle at trying, it would take many years for us to get the balance back to where it's at today.
I figure it's a question worth asking.
No, it's a, it's a great question. We have a lot of discussions about the unassigned fund balance. I'm glad you asked it.
That's all I have. Otherwise, thank you very much. Did a great job.
Thank you. And thanks for the great news.
All right. Thank you very much.
Can we get a copy of the reports of the Budget Committee?
Sure.
Electronic.
I have, no, but I have an electronic one.
Can you send it to me, because I have to post on the website, too?
Okay.
Okay, we're going to take a little four-minute recess, because the public hearing will start right at 6:00, according to computer time, and that's, that clock up there is not correct. We have about four minutes. Can I ask someone to trade that door open, please? So that people can hear and.
Do you see where the guy started?
Not even looking.
Nope. Twice, two weeks in a row. I'm going to be able to build this in my sleep.
For those of you that are here, in case you don't know, the town clerk's office will be closed October 6th to the 10th, because they're doing a state, the state is doing an update on all of the software.
Wow.
So if you need anything done, do it before October 6th or after the 10th. This will be posted, but I just wanted to get this out as much as we can. It's not our fault. The state has purchased and is installing, I believe, a new, totally new software system.
You sure it's not for all the little buggies that you had to register?
Yeah, yeah.
Just a note, they did try this three months ago on the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Got canceled.
What's his license plate number on that? One? One slash 64. Fred, when we were doing the pledge of allegiance, did you take a knee?
Too early for that.
I knew you, no, I stood on one foot. Little balance problem, but luckily I'm still closer to the ground than.
I've always thought he took a knee during the pledge of allegiance, but apparently he was standing anyway, so.
Okay.
You don't want to be heard?
Push the button. That shuts it off. You have to hold it down, though.
It's going to read your mind if you hold it long enough.
It pushes the glove.
I do.
Maybe it's broken. You broke it, but I better know.
Should we have gone somewhere else with this, maybe?
Okay, it's 6:00.
If we didn't take up so much room, there'd be more room to set.
Now, I'm going to take a knee, too. I just want to see.
Oh.
I just want to see over the podium. Okay, a couple items. After I read the statement of the public hearing, I have, I have some information that I need to share with you that we discovered today from our legal team.
Wait till you.
So I want to share that right after I read it, okay? Litchfield Board Selectmen is conducting a public hearing this day at 6:00 PM in the Town Office Meeting Room, 2 Liberty Way, Litchfield, New Hampshire. The purpose of the public hearing is to discuss the recommendation of the Litchfield River Access Subcommittee to construct an access road and parking area at 296 Charles Bancroft Highway for kayaks, canoes, and other hand-carried boats. Residents wishing to speak on this matter are invited to attend, or comments can be sent by email to the town administrator. I will open the hearing after I tell you that we received, we wanted to make sure that everything was done correctly, for everyone's sake. We asked our legal team whose responsibility, you know, if it was our responsibility, the Conservation Commission, to approve this project. Now, apparently, there's a couple of gray areas in the law, but basically, if it is conservation property, which I believe it is, the Conservation Commission has the authority to determine what functions go on that property. I will read you what our legal team said. Before we go into the public hearing, I'd like to ask you, as residents, and as colleagues, and as friends, the public hearing tonight, I'd like to keep the comments pertinent to the point, and please, non-repetitive. There will be no personal attacks. The first personal attack will shut down the hearing, okay? We are civilized people, and we can construct, we can have a constructive dialogue. We may not agree, but that's our democracy. We are here to discuss it. Not everyone has the same opinion, and we wanted whoever would like to speak the opportunity to. So let me just read you what our, one of the paragraphs says, because, wait a minute, says, "The Selectmen have to approve the purchase of property by the Conservation Commission." This isn't actual approval of the expenditure of the funds, just the acquisition of the property. The Selectmen have no authority over the expenditure of Conservation Commission funds. We knew that. Because this property was purchased with Conservation Funds, she says, "I have to assume that it is conservation property." Usually, there's some sort of restrictions in place when the town purchases such property. Is there anything in the deed that speaks to this? Well, I'm not sure that we have that. Even without that, though, I would argue that the property cannot be used for anything other than conservation purposes. Because the Conservation Commission acquired it, they get to manage and control it. She said, "I would really need to know more about the project to opine on whether the Conservation Commission funds can be used to build the road, parking area, and path. The Commission has the authority to ensure the proper, quote, 'utilization and protection of the natural resources and for the protection of watershed resources,' unquote, in the town." So in theory, yes, I think they could be. While these improvements would certainly be covered by the town's insurance policy, it is the Conservation Commission that would be responsible for regulating their use." To some, that may be clear as mud, but, you know, will work. So basically, what our job here tonight is ending up being is a forum for the townspeople to express their opinion. What we'd like to do first is ask Jason and Pete to put on a very brief presentation to those of you that haven't seen it, and then we will start the comment period, okay?
Good.
Any questions or comments, or any problems from the townspeople? Are we all set with the way we're going to proceed with it?
Do you want to turn that television out that way, so they can see it?
Yeah, let's do that.
Oh. Turn it to me.
There you go.
Ah, nice.
We've already seen it, so.
I never saw that. They used the fund balance.
Okay, Jason.
Okay, so we good to go?
Good to go.
All right. Well, thank you very much. For some of the folks in the audience, this is gonna be repetitive. It's like the third or fourth time, so I'm gonna try to go through this as fast as humanly possible. There's a little bit of information to go over, so I'll try to go over it quickly. So the town, we all know the town's been looking to acquire river access for decades. There's been many attempts over the years, and nothing's actually come to fruition. However, what really started this whole process, it really started with a poll that we took on a Facebook page, in which all these people put in ideas for cool things, nice things that they'd like to see in town, and 1,850 votes were cast, and river access was like the number one by far thing that people wanted to see in town.
More than double the next two.
Yes, it was double the next item on the list. And so there's a lot of interest in river access in town, and there's a lot of discussion went on regarding river access. So earlier this year, we talked to the Conservation Commission, and a river access committee was formed underneath the Conservation Commission. And 12 folks came, 12 volunteers came and became members of this commission, some of which were on the Facebook page, some of which weren't on the Facebook page. But a good committee was formed. A lot of the people on the committee are probably behind me tonight. The goal of the committee was to find the most suitable location for small craft river access in the town of Litchfield. We're talking canoes and kayaks. We are not talking powerboats and major boat launches. We're talking about carry-in access. That was the goal of the committee. We went through this process, we actually developed a process to achieve our goal. And we did two things right up front. Number one is the committee met and developed a list of criteria, things that we wanted to see in the selected site. And things that were on our criteria list included, we wanted to see gentle slopes, good visibility, low impact to the land, good river conditions. Topography had to be as smooth as possible, not a long distance from the road, and we had to make sure that the thing could be constructed, was feasible to be constructed. So we set that list of criteria. That's the first thing that we did. Second thing that we did is we went through a process where we basically inventoried every single piece of publicly-owned property along the Merrimack River, town land, federal land, state land. And we even included a couple of privately-owned pieces of property. And number seven up there is a piece of property up in Manchester under the bridge. And we've now had our list of criteria and the sites that we could look at, and we went through the painstaking process of looking at every single potential site against the criteria. At that point in time, we realized that nearly half of these sites, we good? That nearly half of these sites were eliminated immediately because they really didn't even meet one criteria. One of the things that's particular and interesting in Litchfield is that the riverbanks, the riverbanks are very steep.
Very steep.
So there's very few actual good locations for this. So a lot of these were eliminated immediately. We then went through a process, and we went through a shortlist, and we ended up with basically four or five pieces of property, properties number two, three, and four, and property seven. We did two sightwalks. Sightwalk number one was at property number seven, up underneath the bridge. Rich LaSella set this up. We met with the state DOT, we met with the city of Manchester, and we met with the river committee folks there. And we took a look at that piece of property, and it was eliminated just due to the fact that you couldn't actually build a boat ramp there. There was a critter crossing, the slopes were too steep. So that was eliminated from contention. We then focused on the remaining parts of the short, remaining properties on the shortlist. Site number two, site number three, and site number four. Site number two is the state-owned land across from the library, and actually, we also looked at the town-owned land just to the south of that as well. Site number three is a private-owned piece of property on Charles Bancroft Highway. Site number four is town-owned land at 296 Charles Bancroft Highway. The committee got together, we met, we went out on a sightwalk, we had our criteria in hand, and did a sightwalk at each one of these pieces of property. We took a long, hard look at the state land on 3A, because we know that that was a spot that we were hoping was gonna be perfect for us. But when we took a sightwalk on that piece of property, we realized instantly that the riverbank slopes were very steep in that, on that piece of property, 20 and even close to 30 feet, 30 feet high. I just want to say, on the state-owned piece of property, we vetted that extensively. We talked with the State Department of Shoreland. They told us that they wouldn't even grant us a shoreland permit or an excavation permit on the slope simply due to the fact that the slopes are so steep. So that was out of contention. We also did a little bit of research on that piece of property, just to follow up on one last thing. The state actually proposed a boat launch there in the mid-1990s, over 20 years ago. We did the research on that, took a look at the plans, and then several years later, they eliminated it from contention just due to the fact that the access wasn't good. So that was eliminated from contention. We then went to the private piece of property, number three, took a look at that piece of property, it was actually perfect. I mean, good slopes, good visibility, checked every box with the exception of, guess what? It's privately owned. Talked to the owners, Joan talked to the owners, they're not interested in selling, doesn't look like they're ever interested in selling, so we had to remove that from consideration. The committee, as we were walking up the street, we're thinking, God, we're never gonna find a piece of property that was as good as that one. Then we walked up the street, and we went to the town land-owned piece of property at 296 Charles Bancroft Highway. None of us had ever been on that piece of property before, probably with the exception of Joan, and we didn't even know it was town-owned land. And we walked on there, did a sightwalk, and we were pleasantly surprised that it basically checked every single box on our criteria. Perfect, perfect slope, good grade to the river, the river conditions were excellent. We wouldn't even have to cut a tree, good visibility from the road. It met every single criteria that we had, and when, as a committee, we got together and we thought, my God, we thought it would be, it would be hard to beat number three, but it did with site number four. So we met as a committee later on as a follow-up, and decided on all those pieces of property that number four was the overwhelming favorite location for river access. And to be quite frank, it's the only location, the only location. All the other riverbanks, slopes are too steep. Unless a piece of property comes up for sale, it's really the only location. Diving into the details on the piece of property itself, 296 Charles Bancroft Highway, owned by the town, purchased by the town in 2014 for $610,000, got an acreage of 13.6 acres and 1,200 feet of frontage along the road, about 200 feet of frontage along the river. Then, as a committee, we met and we went over conceptual plans. Now that we picked the piece of property, we decided to come up with the conceptual plans. And we had a few different options. Option number one, upper left, is while we were at the sightwalk, we thought it would be a good idea to actually bring a riverfront access driveway down the middle of the field and bring it down toward the river. The reason why we did this is because there was farm, there were farm roads already there, and we wouldn't really have to destroy anything. We're just going right down the existing roads. We talked to the Conservation Commission about that. They didn't like the idea of it going down the middle. They told us to put it down the southern property line, and that's when we came up with option number two. We took the exact same road down the property line and brought it right to the river, about 500, 600 feet, 500 or 600 feet down. At that point in time, we met with the folks, there are folks that are farming this field, we met with the folks that are farming this field, and we went and heard their obvious concerns. And their major concerns, we're probably gonna hear it tonight, but what we heard is that they want anybody on the field, people could get on there with their cars and rip it up. They're concerned about theft of vegetables, which are all very valid concerns. And we heard what they said, and we came up with, on the back of a napkin, came up with option number three, which would bring the road about halfway down, and that road would be fenced in, and there would be rocks around it so people couldn't get easy access to fields, at least with their vehicles. And that process would bring the road down a few hundred feet, and the big thing there is that the cars would be visible from the road. So then we stepped back, and we had these three options on the table. We met as a committee, and the, there were 11 people there that night, and we came up and voted on it, and the folks on the committee felt that option number two, bringing it closer down to the river, was the most acceptable option. And the reason there was that it would provide better access, better ADA compliance, and things like that. So that was our conceptual plan, was actually option number two. Now, diving a little bit into this, once we figured out where we were gonna go with this, we actually had a conceptual, good two-hour meeting where we did a conceptual brainstorming session. And we wanted to make sure that the access that was provided to that piece of property was as low-impact and minimal disturbance as possible, the lowest impact possible. And so we ended up coming up with the following plan. From Route 3A, a 20-foot-wide driveway would cut in about 500 feet and go down to a parking area that would hold maybe six, six or eight cars. And that's really the major pieces of it. You would park your car, you would take your canoe off the top of your car, and you walk a couple hundred feet down to the river. The river right there is perfect, and there already is, like a boat ramp already established there where you can drag your boat in.
Easy, gentle slope.
Some attributes related to the plan. Number one, we would have a gate at the, right at the top. The police chief said they'd be willing to shut that gate at 8:00 at night. There would be signage up at the road and down at the river stating the rules.
Jay, the chief also said that that would be part of their patrol. They treat it like a regular road.
Yep.
It'd be on regular patrols.
Exactly. There would be a, at least 100 feet of fence on both sides going down the road to make the thing look as pretty as possible, and make sure that folks can't jump the fence and get over to the field. There would be trees also along the road and boulders to make sure that cars couldn't get off the beaten path and get onto the field. And there potentially, at some point in time, could potentially be security cameras down there to patrol it in real time. So our goal here was, is to make, like you said, as low-impact as possible and as visually pleasing as possible. Okay. And then giving you a look at the project size, what we're talking about here is what it looks like. That would be the impact to the land, that's about the size of it. Zooming out a little bit more, that higher piece of property, and that white piece is the impact on the land. And zooming out a little bit more, that's where you can see it in the whole area. So we're trying to take up a sliver corner of the piece of property so that people can get down to the river. Little factoids, 525 feet of driveway. We'd be using about 2.5% or 30 feet of the 1,200 feet of road frontage. We'd be using about 11%, about an acre to an acre and a half of the 13.6 acres. The parking area would be about 50 to 75. Zero trees would be cut, easy construction. The committee then got together on a few other things to look at other attributes of the piece of property. We talked to the fire department, and they actually said that they had very limited river access, and that this would be a good idea for, this would be a good thing for them, a welcome addition. And so we actually implemented a gate so that the fire department could get down there. Talked to the police department, Pete just talked about it a second ago, they would be willing to patrol it and close the gate. We talked to the state about ADA compliance, we're good with that. We just have to make sure that, we have to build our path three feet wide, and that's a hard-packed surface. Really limited state permitting. We did the deed research on the piece of property, there are no limitations on the use. And then we came up with construction options. And a long story short on construction options, we have two choices. Rich has talked with the US Army Reserves. They are potentially gonna use this as a test site, and they are, if they do so, we'll have the construction done for free. We really only have to pay for the materials. We also have a local contractor in town who said that they would donate crushed gravel for it as well.
And also pay for the diesel for their vehicles, but that's it.
Yep. And we would really only be responsible for fencing, gates, the signs, trees, things like that. If we had to have someone build it, it would cost about 21 grand for them to do the work that the US Army would be done. And then we had some optional items there, like the cameras and so on, that we would, if need be, we would take a look at those. So that's the process that we went through. I just want to say that we came into this with 100% good intentions because we feel that the people in town just really want to be able to access the river. I personally have canoed four times in the last 20 years. And so this, I'm not an avid canoeer person or anything like that, but I think it would be a great amenity to the town. We did a little bit of research. In between north of Concord, Boscoon, and Tingsborough, Litchfield is the only town between, from Concord to Lowell, without public river access. All these other communities have at least one, if not multiple, locations. And so we think that this would be a very good thing for the town, and have tried to do this in as low-impact as possible.
All set?
That's it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, for those of you that may have come in a little late, I, we're gonna open the forum for public input. What I would ask, again, please, is to keep your comments pertinent, short, non-repetitive, and again, no personal attacks. If we see a personal attack, I'm gonna shut it down because we don't, we're all adults. And so I want to give as many people who would like to speak the opportunity and...
They're looking for people's speech?
Oh, well, I'm sure there's plenty, so hold on. I'll, I'll, I don't know any good way to choose people. I will just, if you raise your hands, I will just choose you one at a time. And I guess we'll start. You had your hand up first, so why don't you, come on up to the podium, please, sir, and introduce yourself. Tell us where you're from, I mean, where you live, and your name.
My name is Gene Porter. I live in Nashua. I'm the chairman of the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee. It consists of four towns, Litchfield, Hudson, Nashua, and Merrimack. And our job is to protect the river. And the way we protect the river is we review projects that are taking place on the riverbank, but we also encourage use of the river, because the river will be better protected the more people that use it. So we are strong advocates of public access to the river. This committee has done a wonderful job of researching the access, the lack of access from Cromwell Slough down to Plutaka Dam. Certainly, there is no good motorboat access. You're not proposing motorboat access, and that's just fine, because Nashua is trying to get its Greeley Park ramp upgraded, and Merrimack's talking about a possible ramp. But right now, there is very little good access to this 17-mile stretch of river. So this project could get interested people on the river in a low-impact way, and the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee strongly supports that. I've got another hat on, and that's the State Public Water Access Advisory Board, which has been looking for access on this part of the river for years, and very glad to see this town initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lebec, you had your...
Yes.
No, no, please.
Thank you for that tremendous presentation.
Okay.
It's gonna be hot act to follow.
No problem. Good luck.
For the record, I'm not against the boat launch, I'm just against it on this particular piece of land. I know it's the perfect piece of land, but I have some information I'd like to hand out to the Selectmen, also Jason, in reference to...
Tom, could you speak up louder?
That's what Brent said tonight, I guess it's really probably not pertinent anyhow, but I'm gonna go through this.
That's fine, sure. And speak up for them, okay, out there.
Tom, maybe if you turn your podium to your broadcasting voice.
There you go.
Yeah.
Wow, sound engineer.
What I presented is the conservation minutes of August 7, 2014, at which time, $610,000 to keep the property for agriculture use in perpetuity. Just as a point of information, that was my number-one presentation. The second one is from August 11, 2014. The highlighted point will be stating usage of agricultural or open space. That's number two.
Now, these are from minutes of the conservation.
That one's from the Selectmen's meeting. The second one's from the Selectmen's meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
The next one, the next one coming is from the conservation. This is highlighted again from the October 2, 2014 conservation year, meaning predominantly used for agricultural use. This is again pointing out, please.
So, Tom, just in perspective for those people out there, this, the minutes from, that Tom is referring to on October 2, is, the first item is, they talked about the purchase of the property of 296 Charles Bancroft. And what Tom has highlighted here is that, let's say, Richard has been drafted up declarations of conservation covenants and restrictions for the town to record, mainly for agricultural purposes. Litchfield Conservation Commission agrees that RSA 3774547, Item A, should be amended to include the wording predominantly used for agricultural use. New Hampshire Fishing Game has not responded to John McGivern regarding questions about a boat ramp, et cetera. Okay, just wanted everybody to know.
Thank you.
Another one? Jeez.
I'm following you.
I know.
Okay, this is from Conservation, January 8, 2015. Covenants for certain town-owned property. Town Council, named Laura Specter Morgan Esquire, sent an email dated December 8 to John McGivern as reply to emails sent to Town Council with the verbiage that the LCC drew up as a template to use for our conservation purchased property. Town Council states as unenforceable declaration because it is agreement not between anyone and not supported by any consideration moreover. It is unnecessary declaration because when the Conservation Committee purchases property with Conservation Fund, that land must be managed in further frenzy for the purpose of RSA 36A, which the property utilize and protect the natural resources. This one ran out of ink, probably through. Just like put down for Jason, I put your name on it so you can read it because the rest of them aren't going to be able to read them.
I can share.
And I gave one for Trent with his name on it, so he can share.
Okay.
The rest of you are only going to get some of the, because it ran out of ink like I did. This is from January 12, 2015, Litchfield Board of Selectmen. This is here where they were discussing the Agricultural Commission, which we have met with the selectman this a couple of times in behalf of the Conservation Committee. It goes on, on the bottom of the first page, management and protection of agricultural and agricultural resources tangible or intangible that are valued for the economical aesthetics, cultural, historic, and community significance. Mr. Byram states, there was a meeting conducted by the planning board which discussed the goal of trajectories of the people living in the town of Litchfield. One of those goals was to keep agricultural character within Litchfield. He mentions the master plan, farmers in the interests of Litchfield. It's just a point of information in reference to the interest that was there. And I guess that wraps up my presentation. I am personally opposed to a boat launch, but this not, not in that particular location. I think that the aesthetics of that particular field, one of the former members of the board Conservation Committee indicated to me that this was the number-two piece of land in Litchfield to be preserved for agricultural purposes. But I don't, I'm one of these people, I'm illiterate when it comes to computers, and so I wasn't able to get to the RSA in reference to that quote. I was losing earlier time, but I was unable to get to NRPC when they did this survey about 12 years ago. And this particular, this particular piece of land is listed as number-one. So, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Who's up? Back, yep? Please come forward and state your name. Tell us where you live.
Okay, my name is Barry Colby, and I'm representing my sister's estate, Carrie Colby, 318 Charles Bancroft Highway, as an abutter to this project. Until I got the notice of this particular meeting, no one ever asked any opinion of, you know, any of our opinions about how this project was going to go forward. I rent the farmland that we currently have at our site to request of farms, and I have to take care of their interests and not wanting to have people tromping over the field. Also, I have a house lot, a two-and-a-half-acre house lot for sale, and it's going to impact that because that will, it abuts the land that the town bought. And I, so I'm against the project because of the potential for problems with my own land and with the, our tenants on the land, and with the potential for a house lot that we have that we're going to be trying to sell. So I just wanted to register my feelings about it as an abutter. We have 1,200 feet of riverfront access on our own property, but it's just too, you know, it's just too close to have so many people near the, you know, tromping over your land. I mean, I know you're taking precautions about that, but I don't think anybody's going to be there all the time to check that. So that's my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, over here, sitting down.
Tim Wade. I haven't lived here as long as many of you people, especially that gentleman over there, but 30 years ago, when I was on the planning board, we talked about this. And that's before we built all the, all the buildings along the river and the golf course. We talked about this. As a matter of fact, during the discussions, there was discussions about, okay, there was this one lot that was closed down that we did that, but then people walked down there and looked at those lots and how, how far of a drop there was. And that was not going to be a possibility. So for 30 years, we've talked about this. And, and our children have grown up in this town without a river access. And I was a, I was an extensive kayaker and canoeer before I came here, but could never practice it because we never had it. And we're not a rich town. We can't go out there and purchase all the land that we want to have the perfect site to meet everybody's perfect needs. We don't have that, we don't have that luxury in this town. We don't have the industry. And we've had a history, including 30 years ago, where some people who opposed the project, particularly the Charbonneau project, to take and put down in the southern town, where they just got so fed up with people who were abutters, even in Hudson, when something that would about revenue went to the town and was right where we were going to cross the river where the circumstantial highway was at that time, was going to make that, was going to bring, that some people thought that, oh, you know, we're going to be possible abutters, we should go against it. We've had this continually over 30 years, where we, instead of looking at our community, and we are a community, we built a high school. We've, we've taken and many other things as a community. We extensively expanded their pond over the years because we know as a community, we need something. And this is something that doesn't have motorboats. People are going to walk down, and if you want to take and do damage to farms and stuff like that, you can do that all over the place. But you know what? We have a community here, and we will self-police this. There will be people down there all the time, and the most safety that you have is presence. And people will be down there, and the police will be down there. So I am in favor of this because we're a community, and we need to do things as a community and, and behave like, we can be stewards. If we're bad stewards to this land, then shame on us as a, as a town. But I don't believe we will be bad stewards. I believe we'll do a good job of stewardship and be good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. I'm going to, did someone have their hand up here first, and then Dr. Kellaw?
Hi, my name is Judy Brennan. I live on Aldrich Street here in Litchfield. I can understand concerns of abutters. Our property abuts the Litchfield Forest, so right at the edge of our property, we have the parking for the entrance to the forest, so we have to deal with hunters and cleaning up people's beer cans and litter and things like that along the property line. But I think our town can't make progress, and we can't build things for the community because we don't want abutters to be upset. I can understand how abutters feel. We wouldn't have Campbell High School because there are people living there, along there who had concerns. The new lacrosse field's over on Albuquerque where the parking is setback from the road. You can't see it. So I don't know if there are issues with illegal things going on down there. But there are lots of abutters of that property, and they had, you know, valid concerns because they were living there. But do we not make progress or, or work for the town and the community? Because whatever we do, there are going to be abutters. You can't, I can't think of any place in town where we could build something where somebody doesn't abut it and it doesn't impact them. Like I said, I don't want to play it down because we, we live with that, too. But I think regardless of what's proposed, whether it's a boat launch, or another field, or expanding their pond, or building an elementary school, there's going to be abutters who are, who have a concern, or multiple concerns with anything new, you know, coming to town. That's just my piece.
Thank you. Dr. Kellaw?
Stephen Kellaw, 168 Charles Bancroft Highway. I just have a couple of concerns and also a bit of information that you may not know. On Saturday, the Historical Society hosted Merrimack Historical Society at our building in the center of town, and they told us that Merrimack is beginning to build a park across the river, and it's going to go all the way down through, and they're going to have river access there and so forth. And so we were thinking in the Historical Society, wouldn't it be wonderful if we had one on this side of the river that is contiguous with theirs? And we do have a site access for river access at the old Savini property, which is right at the end of Stage Road. And years ago, they had a road down into the river, and there would be no abutters there, only the town. It would be the town's property. That was one thing I wanted to tell you. The second thing I wanted to tell you was, my cousin, Charles McQuest, farms the land. And you know, you have to keep in mind, he has to use pesticides to farm. And you all have to be aware of that and can't come back a year later and say, guess what? We can't put any pesticides on this property because people are boating and so forth down here because agriculture is the primary reason that we purchased this land. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor. Oh, I'm sorry, sir, did you have it standing? Okay, you, then you, then you, okay?
Yeah, hi. My name is Gene Berg. I'm on 294 Charles Bancroft. When the land was purchased, it was purchased to conserve farmland. I'm afraid that the loss of farmland is, is only going to be eroded by each new project. I liked the farming, you know, feel of the town. I think it's what makes it special, and I hate to see more and more of it disappear. I have put a kayak in on, on Merrimack. I usually use the Pearl Harbor Bridge area. It's very, very close to the road. There's parking there. And although there are a couple of rocks, they could be easily moved out, and the slope is just as gentle, the distance is much shorter, it takes much less time to get down there, and it's less disruptive to, obviously, the farmland nature of commission's purchase. I would suggest looking at that. I don't think the site work would require much at all when the slope is very, very gentle. And I've carried a tandem kayak down there, which is about the size of a, of a big canoe, so it's, it's easily down.
Thank you, Mr. Berg.
Hi, I'm Peter Raines. I'm at 21 Moose Hollow Road, and I'm a member of the Recreation Commission here in town. And that's why I'm here tonight, just wanted to express the support of the Recreation Commission for this project, as my guests were interested in increasing opportunities for active recreation in the town, and the river's a unique feature of Litchfield, and we think this may create a nice opportunity to engage folks in that recreation opportunity.
Thank you. Sir?
Josh Lane, 375 Charles Bancroft Highway. I've lived here my entire life. We never wanted access to the river back when I was a kid because the river was dirty. Now the river's clean. There's a lot of kids in this town. There's a lot of recreation in this town. There's no reason why we should not have access to this river. There's other sites available. There's plenty of opportunities. There's actually Marion Colby's site that she's actually willing to talk to the town about selling. I grew up farming this land. Seven years old, I know the property they're talking about. It's a very small impact for a farmer, for one little road to go through there. I really don't believe this needs to be such a huge deal with all the land available in this town. There's no reason for it. And if you're not going to give people access to a river, they're going to get it anyway. The town owns the land. The town can do what they want with that land. Just because you lease the land doesn't mean you own it. And that's, that's the way it is. You can farm it all you want, but the town owns the land. You can't tell somebody you can't do something with your own land. I just built a brand-new house in this town, and I paid a lot of money for impact fees, change of usage, driveway fees, to the amount of $30,000. So that money should go back to the town, not just be left in an account for something else. You know, give it back to the people who live here. We pay a lot of taxes here. Let's do something with it that's good for the town, good for the kids, good for everybody that lives here. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Wade. Okay, who is it?
Roger St. Lawrence, 26, Nessunke Drive. I'm currently on the Conservation Commission. I think I'm on my fourth term. Ever since I've been on the Conservation Commission, that was one of my, my top priorities, was, was to find a place where we could put a boat launch in this place. Growing up in this town all my life, and during the 50s and 60s, I can contest it, the Merrimack River was an open cesspool. It was just absolutely horrible. And right now, it's, it's just a pristine, beautiful, beautiful river, and it's just a shame that, you know, more people can't get down there to see the river. Two points. The Savini property, which we already talked about, which is the property that's across from, from the library, is just totally out. That, that's a 30-foot drop over there. You, you would want to, and there's, there's no access. When you get out onto the road, looking either way, you're going to get clipped by cars coming by 100 miles an hour. I, I wouldn't even look at that one, and we did. Number two, is that when we, when this property came up for sale, several members went, oh, boy, a boat ramp. This is an ideal, pristine place for a boat ramp. And, you know, we may be taking away one small portion of it, probably an acre. I think that's very, very little to ask. And number two is, if, if we're using chemicals that, that, you know, we can't walk down there, you know, maybe we shouldn't be eating some of this stuff. Just, just my thoughts. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, next, there was a hand up. Okay, sir?
Take a question. Obviously, we farm the land. You guys, I had a question about the whole thing that would actually turn this farmland much less usable for us. Last year was a very dry year, a very rough year for us. I mean, it was terrible. If this road goes through, that's what we use this for now, is irrigation. We put a pump, very expensive, a lot of piping, a lot of work. You know, how exactly are we supposed to be able to leave very expensive equipment in this location, knowing that it's open to the public? Now, we already all know that people do nefarious things. We deal with it constantly, out of the goats that we have and stuff like that. Jason, is this a map you can move? Can you bring this up to where that small grocery store is? I forgot the name of it. I forget the name of it, Litchfield Food Mart or something?
The LFM?
Yeah, right, not too far. I don't know. Whatever it is, wherever that's at, you know, right next to Mel's.
I think, yeah, I got it. Don't worry, I'm going up there. I got it.
Don't they have a beer? Beer cool there?
They do. Lots of episodes of that in their place. There's Mel's. Sorry, I'm getting there. I'm getting there.
All right. Right here.
Right there.
Now, just recently, I took a walk down here. We also farm this property, right here.
Yeah, let me go like that.
And right here, up against the road, there's a no trespassing sign. And there's a gate, and it's not a gate, it's a chain that's hung up. There's three or four no trespassing signs that are posted there almost every year and always get torn down. And constantly, if you take a walk down here, which you can't because you'd be trespassing, you're going to see a myriad of garbage. When you get to the bottom here, which is again, through a no trespassing sign, through a gate, there is a pile of garbage that could fill that corner of the room for no reason. Then you go down to the river, there is also river access there. And the time that I went and took a walk down there, I was here doing other farm work, decided to take the walk. There was, I don't know how many, 24 packs of Bud Light just all over the place. This is un.
Empty, of course.
Empty, of course, yeah. No, no one was leaving them there for me, but.
Sorry, call us a rope swing.
My, my, exactly.
That's why the teenagers go hang on the river.
Exactly. There is a rope swing at some point in this location. I have not seen it, but it is in this area. Now, this is through uninvited property. These are people who constantly break the law to go and do whatever they want here. And one of our bigger concerns was already mentioned, but if we invite people to go into this area, we feel that there's, it might be closed in a few years because of vandalism, constant harassment, not harassment, constant berating of the area. One of the other things was, he's right, I forget who said it, but we have a constant amount of people down there. It would help reduce crime. I mean, you're not going to do something bad if someone's watching, but the amount of times that we have people just in town, not only our farmland, go drive through a cornfield, just the hell of it. And how do you catch them? How do you know? They do in the middle of the night. The police are great. We love the cops. Every time we need help, they always come down. But the fact is, we could lose severe amounts of income on that area. And if we have a year like last year, how can we afford to lose, I don't know what the cost is, a $30,000 pump, just because someone decided to go through and rip out a cooling line while it's running? That's another major concern that we have. And you know, that stuff is not cheap. It's very old some for us. We just have to take care of it. But in the irrigation of that area, will actually severely reduce the usage of farmland in that area. I don't know how that ramp got put in. I don't know how it got there, but it's been there for years. And that's exactly what we've used it for. So I'd like to just, you know, that's one other thing is, what kind of security will we have on a pump in that location? Because we can't, we don't have a pump strong enough to push water from our other area that we use, you know, directly behind our property.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Let's see, someone who hasn't spoken, sir, in the blue chair right here.
My name's Eric Fair. I'm a trustee of 301 Charles Bancroft Highway. I have major concerns about this, only because I've lived in five different states. Every boat ramp that, similar to this, that I've seen, I live up currently in Northfield, one of the areas in Franklin. I was hiking down there, walking my dogs, and I had three rather sketchy guys go by me. And I was very happy that I had my dogs with me because I did not feel safe. At this time, my stepmom currently lives at 301 Charles Bancroft. If the people are going down there and doing nefarious things, such as, like I said, in Franklin, they're doing drug deals and things like that, it's a very short shot across that road to ending a literally woman living by herself. I also have concerns about, I've lived at 301 Charles Bancroft for quite a long time. My father owned it. And my grandfather used to own 297. That stretch of road is about the only passing stretch, decent passing stretch, in here. I've been almost hit coming out of 301 Charles Bancroft Highway several times by people gassing it to get through there. That stretch of road that you're talking about is right at the end of that. I can see the potential, serious potential for accidents. So I realize people want access to the river. I mean, I walked down that, down that and was told by my uncle that you still own that adjacent piece of property to go down there and use it. Because I believe it was my grandfather that actually put in that potential road that's there for his irrigation when he used to farm it. So, like I said, that's my concern. I'm very concerned about most public places. I realize you guys are putting in security, potentially putting in security cameras and potentially putting in gates. I just haven't seen that stop people from misusing it and for other activities, especially after dark. That's all.
Thank you. Matt, did you have?
My name's Matt McQueston, 330 Charles Bancroft Highway. I am not opposed to river access at all. I just don't think this is the right spot. The parking is going to be down low. It's just going to invite drugs and alcohol. You go up to that other piece of land, there's beer cans everywhere. You're not going to be able to patrol it. It needs to be seen by the road. And to me, taking away the land is not really going to be a big deal to me. It's the trouble it's going to bring to our community in three to four, five years. We're not going to be able to control it. And I say that, how many here remember the skate park? The skate park? Do you remember the skate park?
Mm-hmm.
We were promised and promised we're going to do everything we can for the skate park. And it was nothing but trouble. We ended up tearing it down. If this doesn't work, is this going to be torn down? I mean, I just don't think it's the right spot. It needs to be visible from the road. And I just see the skate park, the same thing with this project. So that's just how I feel.
Thank you, Matt. You had your hand up before and then, oh, who went behind you, Kevin? You're on duty.
John Bryant, 16 Arcadian Lane. I'm the current chair of the Recreation Commission, also on the River Access Committee. I was asked to join it because of where we stand in the Recreation Commission, looking for new projects, helping the town out all the time. The skate park was before my time with the Recreation Commission. Since my time, we've upgraded Dara Pond extensively for its use. We've built new lacrosse fields, soccer fields combined behind the tennis courts. When we did that project, we heard from neighbors that the parking lot is going to be a disaster. It's off the road, nobody can see it, police can't patrol that, and we're going to have constant problems down there. It's a very large parking lot and there's no view for the police department. The police department regularly patrols that. I regularly go down there at least two or three times a week at night to see if there's people down there, which in three years, I've had one car parked at the tennis courts after dusk. Our goal in the River Access Committee, when we talked about this park and setting up river access, was to have a closable gate at sunset and at sunrise, open again. Having the chief say we can make that part of our daily patrols was a wonderful place to go. And from that, we also discussed in that timeframe of a seasonal item as river access to be closed in the wintertime and no access at all down there. We don't want people heading down. There would be other times of the year, whether it be the Conservation Commission, the Recreation Commission, the Selectmen, I'm still not sure how the details are going to flow out in this.
Nor are we yet, so the information we got today, we're going to have to work through.
That details we'll play along with as we go through. The goal is to have communication between the Selectmen, Recreation Commission, Conservation Commission on handling that. Problems in town that we have, I get the phone calls. It's, I'm the guy who, the chief calls if we have problems. In the last two years, we've had two minor incidents in our facilities, all of our facilities. And I'm not going to say we don't have people drinking beer in some of our places, but we have a controlled system with controlled property. When we've looked at the site up above that is not controlled by the town, we don't have any way of controlling that. It's a no trespassing sign. The town can't control it and we can't change what goes on down there. This gives us an opportunity with visibility, with cameras if we need to go down that path because of access, to make sure that it's in control of what's going on in town, just like the rest of the parks that we have in town and the rest of the items we have in town. That's where I've stood in the committee. I keep saying, we can do this as a town. I'm all for it. I'm a big canoeer. I love access to be able to hop on the canoe, on my canoe, put it in in Manchester and write it right down and take it out in Litchfield. That would be, to me, a wonderful place to go.
Thank you. Now, Matt, this, okay, it's not a question, the answer, it's like, go ahead, go ahead, Matt.
If there is cars left in the parking lot, when the police go shut that gate, then what would they do?
They would check the yard first and then they.
So they would shut the gate if there's cars down there?
No, they take a ride through, they sit, and then they close it.
That goes to the chief and how they would handle it, any other place that we'd have in town.
Okay, how, can I ask, it was, I would like to, if it's okay with you, if there are things that haven't been said or new information, because we're going to start to need to wind this down. And I would like to give as many people the opportunity to speak, but if you have new information or a new idea, sure.
Hi, Diane Klansky, 144 Talent Road in Litchfield. And the skate park being brought up originally, actually, was brought up by me. And I like it as a good example of what, as a town, we do when there's problems. And we address them. And yes, the skate park did get shut down. And that's what we do. If this became the scariest thing that people are liking to say that it could be, that it's going to bring in all these people, which come into our town for other reasons, which I don't want to go into at this point, but they come into our town, some of them live in our town. And I think that we will deal with them in a constructive way, I think we always have. And I also want to rebut the fact that that area right in front of that field is a double yellow line. It's not a crossing area. We've been up and down that road several times. It's a double yellow line. So I just wanted to rebut that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, did you? And then?
Oh, please be nice. I'll take care of him on the way out.
Okay.
Dan Vallicourt, 1 Fallon Drive, here to present some avid fishermen. Just places that I go, places I go fish, people are courteous, outdoorsmen are clean. They're not like the ones that walk through your backwoods that aren't fishing or towed in a canoe and they're out there drinking beer. They're not out there to fish. People that are going to be using these places are going to be out here to fish and canoe and kayak. And, you know, Conservation Committee bought it, has been repeated, bought the land, let's use it. Why are we the only ones without river access paying taxes in this town? It's, you know, I think you can eat fish and eat corn too. You know, not that I eat the fish out of the river, but I think they're good. So, all due respect to the, I buy him the questions, corn, save everything. I know if I'm the outdoorsman myself, see something happen that's not supposed to happen. I've gone to places and picked up other people's trash just because I don't want to be taken, having that privilege away. And carry in, carry out, police patrol, you know, gates open at 6:00, they close at 8:00 PM or 7:00 PM. And the officers, I mean, with a sign saying, you know, your vehicle's towed after 8 o'clock, that's, that's the law. I mean, that's what we respect. And I think that's what everybody will follow. And geez, beautiful river. I hope people fish there anytime. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And then if anyone adds to this, I'd kind of like to wrap it up, but if there's someone that really feels the need to walk or something, certainly.
Kevin wants to talk. Kevin wants to talk.
Kevin? No, we don't.
We don't want to stop.
Kevin, you, no.
You don't want to stop now.
Go ahead.
Hi, Richard Husband, 10 Mallard Court in Litchfield. I am also on the Conservation Commission. First of all, point of procedure, unless you're going to address it anyway, I assume then the next step is this is going to go back to the Conservation Commission for a vote?
Well, we have to get a final determination from our attorneys. We got two different. Opinions from the same attorney. No, not different, but it wasn't. We asked for a clarification on several different issues and she sent them back. And the unfortunate part is that she only was able to send them at like 4:00. So what we're going to do after this, take the input and go back and get a final clarification from her where this needs to go. And at that point, we will let everyone know where we go from here. Because again, we want to do it legally, we want to do it correctly. And it may, what it looks like is that this will be going back to conservation for approval.
Brett, one of the, one of the greatest concerns of legal counsel was, and I didn't have the information, the email came in late today. She wanted to review the property deed to make sure that there was any types of conservation restrictions on the property. And that was her greatest concern was.
Yeah, it sounds like she's going in the direction that the Conservation Commission is going to have to prove it.
Yes.
I just want to make sure, because I didn't want to leave the meeting without the public having some idea of what the, I mean, it must go to the board later.
I said it earlier, you know, at the beginning of it, that as far as we're concerned, at this point, with the information we have, the Board of Selectmen does not have a dog in this fight. This is, and it's going to turn out that what we wanted to do is just hold the public hearing. We voted to hold a public hearing before we had the information that we would not be taking the vote on. And so we wanted to keep the public hearing because we think it's an excellent idea to allow people to come out, express their views and get the town together and make sure everyone has their, say.
Okay, no, as long as we're going to get to express our opinions, then. The second thing is, I just want to clarify, Tom, with that, I respect greatly, you had some papers and you went over them. I just want to clarify for the benefit of the town, there's nothing that is inconsistent with what the Commission, Conservation Commission discussed about this property. There's nothing inconsistent with this usage. True, it says, I believe it says in the deed as well as in the minutes, there would be primarily agricultural land. Well, it is primarily agricultural land. If you use 11% for river access, that's not defeating the primarily. We, you also, I mean, we don't have a discussion in the minutes about the fact that, as Roger pointed out, there were members of the Commission who were very impressed with the fact that there would be river access here if townspeople wanted to utilize it. But of course, those discussions were non-public. So you're not going to find anything in the minutes that are talking about river access. I would be surprised anyway if you did. You'd probably not find anything in our minutes that really talked about much of anything, except we're going to have a non-public discussion of it. And finally, the, Tom talked about the covenants that I had mentioned I would draft. Well, that was really about a different issue. I had suggested drafting covenants for the deed because there was concern with the Conservation Commission that Town Council hasn't been putting in the specific statute where, that we purchased the properties from under conservation funds to make it very clear that these are conservation properties. And for some reason, there's been some tug and pull, I guess, over the years, but it's still not going in. I don't think it went into this deed. So I had suggested, maybe I could do some, I could do a conservation covenant to make it clear in perpetuity that this property was conservation land. It's not that I don't trust anyone here, it's just 20, 30, 40 years from now, if the town's short of money, they may be looking at that property to sell it. There's nothing on the face of the deed. I don't believe it says it's even conservation property. So that's what that was about. It really, it wasn't in any way trying to restrict this to agricultural use or dot river access, had nothing to do with that issue. Finally, I would just say, I quickly, I do support this and I feel actually my main concern is the farmer. I do have sympathy for the budding homeowner, but I just don't see this as a wild party place, especially when you have a gate up at night. And you do have a lot of other people down there who are going to be policing it themselves. I was, I am concerned for the farmer, but I do think that 11% is a really reasonable, you know, amount of land in terms of, we did consider this as a secondary use. I don't know how you're going to really do any better on any other property. And I do, I did, I feel better than Mr. McQueston said, that really the 11% isn't a big issue. They're more concerned about wild parties or whatever, or people destroying the property. I just don't, I just don't see that happening. Thank you very much. I do support it.
Thank you. Kevin, did you?
Kevin, my street 12, Charles Bancroft Highway, I am in a butter, I've also been a resident for the town for a good many years, all of them, I can tell you the truth, I've had a boat on the river, the river for years, been stolen four times, okay, by locals, and I'm local, so I'm just telling you the truth, the pumps have been destroyed by people on the boats going up through, okay? Now, if you give more access to it, it grants you, we're gonna have more. I tried to get it to North End, to get an access to North End, but that sacred ground, it seems like there with the conservation, where it goes right down to Moors Falls, which is a great spot, if you wanna come from Manchester, come to the Rapids, you come in there, there's also a ramp and there's also access to it, but it's like sacred ground, okay? I'm not against access 100%, please, okay, but what I'm thinking of, okay, you gotta consider the reality of this, they will do things you will not expect. Been here all my life, when they put the golf course in, Conservation wanted a walkway across all our land, Hales', mine, everyone else's, so that people can walk across somebody else's land, we said no to that because of the problems we had. Just trying to be realistic, okay, it's nice to have it, but trouble will prevail, okay? Just about all I got to say. Thank you.
Young lady in the back.
Margaret Burke, 294 Charles Bancroft Highway, and I have more questions legally, when you get your legal position from the lawyers, is that gonna be public information?
Oh, absolutely, we're gonna get it out as much as we can, and like I said, I assume that this will be brought back to the Conservation Commission, and at that point, they will take the ball, and I can only assume that they will have either a public hearing or an open meeting, because it will be their decision as to how, what, how to proceed.
How to proceed with this land, now they had, I was at the only public hearing that the Conservation Commission had prior to the acquisition of this land, and at that point in time, there were four people there, I think. I know that there were four of us sitting, and at that particular meeting, the Conservation Commission voted to purchase the land to be used as farmland in perpetuity. It was voted on, at their next meeting that was non-public, they changed their vote. So I guess as a resident and a citizen, what, I have no problem, I have no problem with people using the river, I mean, I use it, I have no problem with that. I'm concerned, A, with what my rights are as a resident of this town, what we should expect from our government officials, and what kind of input we should have. And lastly, two points of clarification, I live on the stretch of road, that is a passing zone. Right now, you can't see the lines, but it's a passing zone. I drive out at the end of my driveway every single day, I know it's a passing zone. Secondly, if I can remember what I was gonna say, oh, you know, I was on the committee and didn't like the design, didn't like where it was, however, I, tonight I heard that it was gonna be six to eight cars parking minimum, maximum, quoted in the paper, it was eight to 10 cars. I guess when we get to a point is that this goes through, when are we gonna finally get the statistics correct? I mean, what are the parameters? Is there a gate, is there a gate? When I was at the last meeting, there was gonna be cameras, now they're not gonna be cameras, they're gonna cost too much. So again, more specifics on exactly what's gonna happen before the Conservation Commission takes a vote.
Thank you. Sir? And I really, after, I would like to start to wrap this up, okay?
Hi, Jim Cardello, Ten Liston Lane in Litchfield, I'm a Realtor in town, and I'll be honest, I've, you know, watching social media throughout since the last meeting, it was on television, I wasn't sure, really, to be honest, whether I would support or abstain, because I was curious as to the questions take on how much of their land would be impacted from their perspective, and I thought Matt answered that tonight, so I didn't think it would. So that brought me up to the podium. I think that having access in town certainly enhances the town from a value standpoint for your property, for my property, I live in town, you all live in town, I think the more you can be progressive as a town to add more to the potential new residents, current residents, is all a positive thing. So I also, I heard from a few, I think we heard from two or three butters tonight, and it seemed to me like a butter is a bad term, and it's not, I don't believe you're a butter, just because you're in a butter mean you have to be against something, I think if you're in a butter, look at the potential for the community, I think we've heard that a few times tonight, and I think in this case, this project would be very positive for the overall value of the town.
Thank you. Are we okay, I want to get to everybody who hasn't spoken, but are we okay after Representative Lasalle's to close the hearing? Are we okay?
I'd like you to direct one thing at the end, Brad, that's all.
Okay.
And I want to go after him.
Just jam on the conversation.
I'll go right before him.
Well, I have a question, I thought this was not for someone to close the meeting, it was for people to give their statements, not to have somebody showboat or, if he has a comment to make about whether he's for or against the access, that's great, but that's what we would vote.
That's exactly what I'm doing.
But if someone's gonna close the meeting?
Well, no, I have to, at some point, we have to, we have to close this, we, otherwise, I do not want to be here all night, and I don't think the rest of you do either.
I'm missing the Wheel of Fortune.
I'm Richard Lasalle's, I live in 236 Charles Bancroft Highway. I've lived in Litchfield since 1979. When I moved into Litchfield, we had one gymnasium, I was at Griffin Memorial School, tile on concrete, we went over and took a look at Dara Pond, Dara Pond had a great gymnasium, it was all boarded up, it'd been burned a couple times, we went in there and we built a real nice park at Dara Pond for a minimum amount of money, and Dara Pond now is a wonderful resource, it's used all the time, that building was ready to fall down. We didn't have a high school, we didn't know where our kids were going to school, we built Campbell High School, then we're kicking us out of Auburn, and we built Campbell High School, and Campbell High School now is something that, for most of us, something that we're proud of. I didn't always live at 236 Charles Bancroft, my original house, it was at 13 Brickyard Drive, which was adjacent to the Brickyard Field. The Brickyard Field was, the people who lived in that house before us had put in a lawsuit to cause chain link fencing to be put up, and when I moved in, I said, "I don't care if there's a field by a pier, that's fine." Well, the first soccer season, somebody came and parked right in the middle where I had my garden, and I was mad. I went to the Rec Committee and I said, "We have to have some sort of fence along the right of way." I said, "I'll put it up if you guys pay for it." Well, they said, "Well, that'd be a good idea," so we did that, and they asked me to join the Rec Committee, and I did, and I've been involved ever since. I got a call the other day and said, by somebody who said, "You know, maybe we made a mistake, maybe we made a mistake in Litchfield, we let all these developers in, and they put all these houses up there, my God, why didn't we keep it the way it was? Why do we need all these new houses?" Well, how far back do you want to go back? You want to go back to 1970, you want to go back to 1735, or how about 1650 when there were just Indians here? What we have here is progress, this is about the best thing that could ever happen to Litchfield, goodness knows, I'm not gonna take advantage of it. All right? I got involved here because I looked at it and said, "My God, we've got this beautiful resource, we've got a beautiful river, and why don't we use it?" When I was on the school board, I bristled when some superintendent said that Litchfield had poor grades because we were from a lower socioeconomic class. I bristled, all right? We're, we'll take, we're not second bananas to anybody, this is something we can stand behind, we can be proud of, just like we're proud of Dara Pond, just like we're proud of Campbell High School, we're proud of everything about Litchfield, let's keep making it better.
Thank you. Tom, did you have a final?
If it does come back to Conservation, we will be having a public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Tom. All right. Sir?
One of the things that I think we brought real quick was that it would be great for the fire department, I know I'm strongly in support of that, it does go through in this property, actually, any property, doesn't matter, but talking to a fireman in town, you know, he said they have very unreliable ways to get down there, so if that does happen, there should be, you know, very, very reliable way for the fire department down there, I mean, God forbid, I don't have kids, thank God.
I guess they've been involved.
Yeah, and they say, you know, there's a heavy access, very credible access for them to get down there, God forbid anybody gets hurt, I think we should, we're gonna put in river access, we should have rescue access.
Thank you. Yes. I just, I would like to, all of you, you have made me proud to live in Litchfield tonight. If our legislators, both state and federal, sorry, conducted themselves like we did tonight, I think we would be far better off. I think for, I speak for my colleagues here, I want to thank you all very, very much for coming out tonight, offering your opinions, offering your suggestions in a manner that was respectful and a credit to the town that we call Litchfield, and we will be doing this again, and again, thank you very much, all of you, and...
Can we hear what Jason had to say?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jason, go ahead. I'm sorry, thank you.
I just want to say that I would have never thought in my wildest dreams that putting in what I thought was a little trail to the river with a few cars to bring a canoe in and dump in the river would ever have turned into this right here, which is unbelievably incredible to me, and I gotta just say, I, everybody has different opinions, and I respect them all, and I think the meeting that you had here today was perfect, everybody was respectful, I think a lot of us have moved to this community because it's a farming community, when we drive up 3A, all of us have a big smile on our face because we have this big, beautiful farmland, I've said it before, if that highway or the railroad track were on Merrimack's side of the river, or on our side of the river, we would be Merrimack, we would have strip malls going up eight miles, but we don't, we have beautiful farmland, and the way that the committee put this together, I think really, A, protects the farmland and provides the people, the town of Litchfield to access to our number one natural resource, which is the Merrimack River. So I want to thank everybody, all different opinions, I greatly appreciate it.
That's all I gotta say, sorry. Thank you all very much, and give yourselves a hand. I will close the public hearing, we will move on with the regular order of business. Thank you all.
That's terrific.
Thank you.
On the 6th of November, the State Public Water Access Board has its bi-monthly meeting, would you be able to give a status report?
I'll shoot you an email, I'll shoot you an email.
Yeah.
Kept everything the same, added a toilet to Jeff Lane.
I don't know if you need one or two, I put one. I had to tweak some propane electric bills.
One of the key issues, I, a couple people spoke to, I said, "History shows," and I've looked at at least 50 voting sites in state districts. People use the sites for legitimate purposes, the better they are, the fewer homeless people are making it.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much.
You don't drive down a deadened road, it's one way out.
But the public, legitimate public use drives away the rip.
So, yeah, I appreciate, I appreciate that.
I would say the Conservation could get that.
I only asked because I was, I was gonna address the problem.
Thank you. We have a representative, Kevin Bork is supposed to be, so I hope so.
I, you know, I saw that little thread, and I went and looked at the impact fee thing, it's not Christopher, but I, at all, it's not easy, it is not easy to do, but I think Steve Perry was right on, I think it's, I think it's more a maintenance thing, and I understand, it used to be skateboard park, then tennis courts, basketball, tennis.
Such a good idea, too.
Did that, was that the skateboard park? That was, then it went back to all basketball.
Can't hardly get in there. Don't just know what the little church has, but that's the church.
Skateboard parks, they've got a back, when they first started getting built, at any time. Nashua's, did you see the one Nashua's got now? Brand new. So, anyhow, so I don't think it is a, I don't think it's an impact fee use, I think it's...
I'd be, I'd be curious to know.
Now it's maintenance, though, you know. Right.
Yeah, but you need what?
Oh, I'll be good.
66.6, right?
Yeah, I'm Thursday, I'm pretty free. But you know, you know the deal is that, it's like, who knows?
No, it's all right, I'm gonna wait. Oh, that, yes, thank you, John.
So you, um...
No.
You'll be late tomorrow morning?
No, I can see.
Might be at eight o'clock. No, NRPC is coming here at eight, and I knew, and I agreed to him, like, oh, I should really try to bump him that night.
Was it two weeks ago I said, "Oh, can you do that well committee meeting?"
Yeah, same thing.
Oh, well, we can't do anything yet, until I get a forum. Okay. I take my little wheelie scooter off, hey, back in here.
You want to go get him, or? I mean, I think, I know where.
If Steve is there, we need to have Steve at least, I know where John, oh, there he is.
Don't worry about us.
Going out to get you.
Why get me, I told you where I was going.
Yeah, well, John decided he wanted to...
What are you gonna do, come into the bathroom?
No, no, but I thought you were...
Did you get that over in the kitchen?
Uh, no.
Maybe, like peanut?
See, I knew you weren't in there.
I stay away from that, every time I go by the kitchen, I'm like, huh, look at me, you think I need any?
Okay, moving right along, the first item under budget discussions is the library. And, Vicki, and come on up.
Holy meeting first.
I love those things, thanks.
There was a peanut on my chair, so I assume you were sitting here earlier.
Now, just to preview your presentation, knowing full well, this is a courtesy presentation on your part to the board, and we appreciate that, you don't have to be here, but we do appreciate that you do, because we do, it's a very gray area, we talk about this every year, but thank you for coming, and I'll open the floor to you. Talk about this every year. But thank you for coming and I'll open the floor to you.
Okay, so I assume everybody's got it in front of them, yes?
They got, um, you should have a link underneath library, blue link there. You open up their spreadsheet.
Yep.
Oh, you wouldn't do it through budget?
A link where?
Under the library, blue font, proposed budget.
Right there, just click on that blue font.
Got it. Just gonna say I thought it was there.
And the account number is?
Four fifty-five dot twenty.
Thank you.
Four forty-five fifty, excuse me, dot twenty.
Here we are. Okay.
Okay, so we just kind of look at the bottom line and where things are coming from. The proposed budget is two hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars. That represents a two-point-one-seven percent increase. The majority of that, four thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars, is from the 2017 Warren article that passed.
Which, for the people.
Which was the second year of our wage plan implementation.
Thank you.
And we have one year remaining on that. And so there was seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars in non-payroll items. One thing to bring up right away is we have a new line item, which is four twelve water usage because we are being hooked up to Peniche, to town water. And the number that I have listed here of four fifty-two was kind of a guess while we waited to get better information, which we now have, and that number is changing to. It's changing to six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Which is based on, Peniche gave their estimate and then I got actual numbers from the Amherst Public Library and kind of did it on a dollars per visit kind of thing because how are you gonna figure this out? And then supposedly there's a twenty-two percent increase coming, so that includes.
Yeah, really.
That includes the twenty-two percent increase, so I'm hoping that, uh, yeah. Right, it'll get in the ballpark there. So aside from payroll and the addition of the water and the fact that electricity is also going up this year, there's not a whole lot to really pick apart here. We did have to add a hundred and eighty-seven dollars, a hundred and eighty-two dollars to library supplies because we need bank checks. And we added, let's see, oh, a hundred and sixty-five dollars under our books and media for the new Sears list of subject headings, which is used for cataloging, and that comes out every four years. But other than that, we didn't really have any increases. And I know if you look at our, our current year, you're going to see under line six thirty, building maintenance and repair, we are already a thousand dollars over. And that is because we had the broken windows that had to be replaced and we've had a lot of things happening, lights that need to be replaced, ballasts that need to be replaced, this, that, and the other thing.
Did the broken windows not go under the insurance?
No, because they were under the one thousand dollar deductible.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
I'm actually impressed that you can maintain that building at twenty-eight hundred dollars this year.
I was just thinking that.
Well, we do have the building maintenance trust fund that we pull from regularly for when we need to do roof repairs and things like that. And we may end up having to get a little reimbursement from that for some of this stuff come year end. But that, yeah, that helps out a lot. And, you know, we kind of go through the same things every year on line items that don't look like they're being spent proportionately, but a lot of things are paid year end. And that's what we see. It always ends up coming out in the end, so. I think you all trust me on that by now.
So bottom line difference is fourteen thousand five fifty-four, higher than current year, correct?
No, five, yeah, and it'll be.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one. My apologies.
The Board of Trustees is gonna have to vote on the new water number at their next meeting, and that's before we see the Budget Committee. So the new increase total will be five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars.
Questions?
Well, it's well within reason.
Yep.
Alright.
And all set?
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Parks and Recreation.
That's forty-five twenty.
One right before the library.
Alright, so I'll go ahead, I'll start off, and then you can add in, John, some of the other bigger items that we don't know what we're doing with yet. But as you know, we've gone through and taken a look at our usage of electricity and propane. So you see increase in electricity, a hundred and fifty dollars. Propane, based on our run rate and the estimated increase in the cost per gallon, that's up six hundred and twenty dollars. We've increased the chemical toilet rental, and that is directly, I believe, adding the, an extra toilet to the Jeff Lane project, you know, Rec Field, so it'll be coming online next spring. And I think that's all that we had for any changes, so everything else stayed the same. However, John is still, and the Rec Commission is still discussing resurfacing the basketball courts. And there was another, and the mowing bids are out right now. So in a couple of weeks, we should know what the results are on the field maintenance bids.
Correct. Okay, so one of my big items, obviously, the field maintenance bids, it's out there. So we're ahead of the game on the budget, or behind the game on the next two-year bid. We're not sure where that'll go, obviously. There's been an email chain going, not sure if the selectmen are involved in it, but the resurfacing of the courts, which were formerly the tennis courts and then the skateboard park, we've resurfaced them and temporarily lined them as basketball courts. That needs a permanent seal on it. If, some of you remember, when we did the permanent seal on the tennis courts, we could not get three bids on the project. Kevin talked to Rick, Rick gave us the name of somebody who did that kind of work and was pretty responsible, and that's where we ended up going. We're not sure if this comes out of impact fees or it should be a line item in our recreation budget. If it should, we're thinking somewhere in the range of twenty-four thousand dollars based off of what we paid to, yeah, exactly, what we paid to seal the tennis courts. Again, it's a twenty-year permanence towards the courts with the lines included in that fee. It's a big chunk of land over there, a big chunk of courts. Where do we go with that?
What's it, two full courts?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I speak on this?
No.
Just kidding.
I, I just feel like, you know, we, we just got these done. It was a gift. Let's take care of the gift that we were given. We didn't pay to have them paved, but we do have a responsibility for maintaining what we were given and what we already own. And I, I don't know with that, with the use of, the change of use of this, is it an impact fee thing?
No.
You don't think so? Even though it's, they were never basketball courts, now all of a sudden they're basketball courts.
Well.
There were basketball courts on tennis courts.
When there was tennis courts there, there were four basketball hoops out.
So that's a budget item, then?
I would, I would think it should be added to our budget.
And the Budget Committee needs to see that. We need to protect this.
I, I agree. I agree. But I didn't know where you guys were gonna go with this before. That's what Troy and I talked about, was should this be added in as a line item for maintenance? It should. That's what we did for the tennis courts.
Well, the, the only thing, question I had is, it's not an every-year occurrence, right?
Who? When we did the tennis courts, we were told it would last twenty years.
Probably putting it as a line item is not a proper, I mean, someone would probably catch you on that one that.
It's a one-time expense. You're just spiking the budget one year, that's it, right?
That's what we did with the tennis courts. We put it in as one line item, Budget Committee. A couple of members objected to it until they heard the recommendations we had from our local paving expert that he said we should do it.
About, you know, whether they, you know.
It should go under program expenses.
Okay.
Not field, not field maintenance?
No, it's not a field.
Yeah, it's not.
Technicality here, program, program expenditures.
It's not a program. It's a, it's a, it's a field maintenance item. It's a, it's a maintenance item. I mean, yes, we call fields, but it's anything that we do for the fields. We put under building maintenance, anything for the building, but.
But is that recurring?
Field improvement capital outlay.
Bingo. I'm all for that. I think that would flow in line with what we've done in the past.
I would, I would absolutely support that.
I mean, that's one thing that we've got to fight for. I mean, if the Budget Committee's gonna be against it, I mean, it just makes no sense to, that's the one thing that we have to do. We have to protect what we have.
Yep. No, it makes perfect sense, but we can't add a number that we don't know. Right, and you would have to bring that to us.
Get something in writing.
Okay, so we'll contact that one person and would that, I mean, that's all we have is one, one person. There's no three people out here. There's one person that we know that does this in three states to the level that we want it done.
Really?
Yep.
There is a provision for sole source provider, but as long as you can document that and that that's not, you know, circumventing our purchasing system.
Correct.
That's what we would need.
Okay.
Assurance that, that it's a sole source provider.
Well, I needed the answer first, whether it was gonna be impact fees or not, so I'll pursue the other side and get the information to Troy.
Okay.
I can, I can ask around a little bit, too, and see if there's awareness of other vendors.
So we should hold up on this, or how do you want to handle this?
You want to put, do you have, well, it is, damn if you do, damn if you don't. I mean, it's, you know, if you put a placeholder in there, but we really don't know, we have no idea of knowing.
We're guessing at the twenty-four grand.
Would, now, when do you have to give this to the Budget Committee?
This Thursday. We're gonna hand it over.
The entire budget?
Yeah. But I mean, it's, but that's the thing, you know, we're gonna hand it over, it's like one week in advance, and then Rec will come up.
Do you know when they, when they deal with Rec?
Let me find it. Budget schedule. Parks and Rec, you're gonna be first, October 5th.
And that's gonna be a problem, based on the bids we've got out there right now for the next two-year bids, that's not gonna be available.
But they won't, you know, they can go.
They can reconsider any.
They're gonna do a bottom-line vote on October 26th.
Yeah, well, even then, they're not gonna take any action, any of the budgets to the very end, so there's time to get in.
Yeah, and you still got delivery session.
So I'll take suggestions. Shall we vote this budget with, you know, making sure that they know that there will be additional items to consider? Or do you want to hold this budget? Would you rather get them all in, Troy?
I think, I think we can put it in, and just when, when John and I present, we just bring it to, you know, we just point it out, saying that it's a placeholder and.
You comfortable with that, Troy? Okay, alright, why don't we do it that way? So I'll, I guess we'll entertain a motion.
Do we put the twenty, oh, yeah, we don't know the number yet, so we're not gonna put it.
You're gonna put twenty-four thousand for now? Is that what you're looking for, a motion?
Is it in there yet?
So it'll be twenty-nine when you do it, right?
Oh, you want to put it in now as the?
If, that's the board's wishes, yeah.
I would say do it, put it in there now as a, like you said, as a placeholder. We'll vote on it, and that'll be the placeholder for it.
Okay, and then you'll adjust it to the, the amount that you get?
That's like approving a budget with an arbitrary wage increase that we didn't give yet. It's really the same thing.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about.
So it should come as their proposal. It should not come as us, us. Because we're not in support of it yet until we have the, the backup for it. But it should be on their proposal into that line. So we don't have to vote anything. You just need to change your proposal, which Troy will do for you.
So the board just.
You did, you modified the Budget Committee last year's number, so you put five thousand back.
Oh, sorry. That's what you said.
The math wasn't adding up.
The Commission already voted for the twenty-four thousand as a group because we knew we were gonna be coming in here.
Okay, but it's not, that's.
Here, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So if they've already made that motion to do it, why don't we just include it here? That's the number.
Can we do that? Can we?
I can add the twenty-four.
The Rec Commission, the Rec Commission voted for the twenty-four thousand dollars we put into the budget.
Yes.
So it should, this budget should represent that vote.
We can choose not to accept it, but it should be in there. And then we just noted it's a, it's a placeholder and it may go up, may go down.
Well, we're not gonna approve the budget because we don't have the background for it to support it.
So we'll send it, we'll send it forward for review, but not with, not with our approval?
Correct, and as soon as we get it, we approve it. Or deny it.
Yeah, I mean, we'll just explain to the Budget Committee, this is what we believe it's gonna be. We didn't vote on it, but it's for their review. And then when they go to make their vote, we need to vote one way or the other, too, and modify it if we gotta modify it.
Well, they, it can also be presented to them and say, the selectmen haven't voted it because we don't have the background yet. Please hold off until you get the vote from the selectmen.
Sure. They can go through the review, but they won't take action.
Makes sense, Troy.
I'm easy on this.
I completely agree with you. If we have an asset and it takes twenty-four thousand, how much do you think the pavement's worth? If you were gonna pay for it? Fifty?
Oh, yeah, at least.
I mean.
At least fifty, because they had to resurface it first before they could pay it.
And in twenty years, it would be junk if you didn't do it anyway.
No, in five years, it'll be junk. It'll start collapsing to the edges, so.
Okay, so the Rec number is, it will be one-ten-five-twenty-nine, right?
Refresh it. I just took the twenty-four.
John, the one thing I do hold, you say that you pay for electricity at Jeff Lane, baseball pays for electricity at Jeff Lane? I'm just saying.
What's that?
No.
We pay for electricity at Jeff Lane, baseball.
I believe you pay for, for the concession stand.
Which powers the irrigation pump, which is the only thing going there. I wanted to shut off the electricity for the winter, and Brian asked me not to because he wanted his irrigation to keep running for another month or so. Because we tried to shut it off for the wintertime, so we don't have a bill. There's only one meter there, so it's gonna be ours if we're paying an electric bill then. We also pay for GMS, too.
Okay, so it hasn't been brought to the Rec Commission to take that expense over? I'm not sure.
No, no, I'm just saying, I, I don't care one way or the other. I just want to point out that that isn't something that you guys need to worry about, because we pay.
But just because, just because it's data, doesn't mean it's, I mean, does that, does the number track it?
It should be in the budget.
Oh, exactly, I know.
It shouldn't become a baseball.
But baseball have to come to us, propose for us to add it to our budget, but they haven't done.
Alright, well, let's change those numbers tomorrow night. Put it on the, put it on the thing.
Okay, so we're gonna defer this budget.
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna defer until we get further numbers from you. Let me talk to you guys.
See you tomorrow night?
See you tomorrow night.
You don't need tomorrow night, alright.
Okay, Mosquito?
Troy?
Mosquito.
What number that is?
Forty-four eleven.
Oh, got it.
And there's no, no proposed change in the mosquito district.
And the contract number is good?
Contract's the same, yeah. We have a new contract that is attached.
Okay, is there a motion?
I make the motion, we approve forty-four eleven dot twenty for the bottom line number of thirty-one one fifty.
Motion to approve thirty-one thousand one fifty for mosquito control by Mr. Brunel. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Discussion.
Yes. How much have we spent? How much have we spent and is there any other, is there any ways to improve this or cut it back?
My understanding is that the contract's a flat fee.
It's a flat fee. It's a fixed contract, so we'll, we'll expend all of thirty thousand eight fifty.
So the only.
It's been a flat price for a good couple of years.
So whether we have problems or not, and they have to spray or not, we're gonna pay the same amount. Ongoing.
Yeah.
Year after year. We still have a mosquito commission.
Well, we have, is my understanding that we, although we've not had a resignation letter. Well, we have, um, is my understanding that we, although we've not had a resignation letter, um, we just have one, one active committee member, or commission member.
Is that the chair?
The chair.
So, how can it be a functioning committee with only one active member?
It can't be.
It's a tyranny.
Well.
Well, I mean, it's, we need, we need to.
It can't be with two either.
So, I guess the question is, what do we do to dissolve this committee and bring it back into the full economy? We can run it out of the health department, just like we should have done.
Probably, um, probably a Warren article question.
It would have to be, because it was passed through.
Right, it was passed by a ward.
So, if we can't, what we should do is, we should put it out on the reader boards, we should put something out to say, mosquito district needs members. And if there's a failed attempt to bring members in for it, then we need to explore other avenues.
Well, I, that's fine, and I think we should, probably should have been doing that, but do we really need this, this committee anymore, when it's literally just managing a contract and a payment, that we haven't, we outsourced the whole thing to?
Right, it should be, it should come in, in-house.
Our health department can handle it itself, and the communications is coming out of the health department.
Troy can do it.
Well, right, but the health department's doing it.
Kevin does it.
My point is, is that I see most communications about mosquito detections, it's not coming from the committee, it's coming from the health department.
Yes.
But, the problem is, before we do anything, we can take all the functions, but in order to dissolve the committee, it's gotta go to Warren.
I'm only arguing that we should, we should go to Warren, we should support, you know, support the budget, obviously, but we should go to Warren in addition to dissolve it, so that it becomes as a normal part of the health.
Functioning part of town government.
So, Troy, I'm gonna put something on you. Can we get it out on the sign to ask for members? We'll do that first, we'll see what happens there, and in the meantime, we should probably draw up a warrant to dissolve it.
When do they?
So that if they do not get members, we could dissolve it.
Right.
And if they do.
Or we could put the warrant out there.
If we do get members, then we can make a decision based upon that.
Do they meet anymore? I mean, do, is there, do they have meetings still?
Well, the, um, the chairman, he's, he's emailed me, and what he does do is, he provides a report. So, he can't, and that's what he does, he does a live report, because he can't get a warrant.
Okay, so the interim, there's a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries four-zero-zero. On cemeteries.
It's forty-one ninety-five. Going with the same price as last year, seven thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve seven thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars for.
Forty-one ninety-five.
Forty-one ninety-five.
Motion by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Schaefer.
Second.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I got it.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Planning board, is there no one here from planning tonight, or?
No.
Okay.
They are forty-one ninety-one. So, the, you'll see just a minor decrease in wages, um, that's just being, you know, working it out to the new schedule. Uh, but the increase here is the NRPC planning services, nothing increased in their contract, uh, but there's some projects that the planning board's working on, and they are planning on using a little bit extra time from the planner. And so, that's the reason for the, um, the request for additional money.
It's, uh, forty-one, forty-one ninety-one?
Oh, I have a zoning board here.
Uh, it's point three. Go further, like.
It's probably further down.
No, it's, it's before forty-one fifty-two, it's just, it's out of order.
Okay, so I guess it's out of order a little bit, here. Alrighty.
I, I was lost for a minute, too.
Okay. Sorry about that. Mr. Brown, I'm sorry.
Okay, so, um, yeah, the only significant change here is a forty-five hundred dollar increase for, um, the contracted services through National Regional Planning Commission. This is, um, due to just anticipated need for extra hours, they're working on a couple of special projects, um, and so the chairman had placed that request.
What's the special project?
Their, the master plan, and their, well, the one that you're serving on too, right?
You bet.
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion, please?
We have health insurance on this one, should we?
Nope, it's gone.
Oh, okay, zero it up.
I make a motion, we approve forty-one ninety-one dot ten, planning board for forty-three thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars.
Moved by Mr. Brunel.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Discussion. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Zoning board, wow, that's a big one.
Yeah, no change.
Five hundred and ninety-six dollars. Is there a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the zoning board, which is line, uh, which is budget forty-one ninety-one dot thirty for five hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Motion by Mr. Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brunel. Discussion. All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Excuse me, four-zero-zero. Conservation. They didn't stay for their budget?
What number are they?
Let's see, I'm looking for them. Conservation is forty-six eleven. Point two oh. And there are no proposed changes for this year. There's, they were considering, uh, eliminating the fishing derby, just due to attendance, and I think, um, the amount of work that goes into it. But at the end, they decided to keep the funding one more year for the fishing derby.
Is that the one they have at Mark Lane, does anybody know?
Yeah.
That was pretty, a couple of years ago.
I think they just need some, they need some, but you know, they've got some younger appointments recently, so.
Yes.
That may actually be very helpful. It's a lot of work.
Some years, the weather has a lot to do with it.
Yeah, two years ago, I mean, I dropped in, 'cause the kid was doing this.
I'll make a motion, we approve forty-six eleven dot twenty conservation commission for twenty-eight hundred dollars and sixty, no, twenty-eight sixty.
Moved by Mr. Brunel for twenty, two thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for conservation, forty-six eleven. Is there a second?
I'm gonna second it, but I want discussion.
Seconded by Mr. Perry, and he wants discussion. Discussion.
So, if we find out that they're in charge of managing their own properties, they're gonna need more money in their property management line, so we can vote this now, but expect it to change.
I would only assume that, and I thought that they were going to be putting in a line also, um, for maintenance of some of the properties that they have.
Well, they, they can use their.
They've been using prisoners, right, to do this?
They can use their, yeah, they, um, they had the prisoner program in here, um, I don't know if they used them this year or not.
Yeah.
But, the conservation fund that they have, um, I understand that the primary purpose of that fund is to purchase land.
Right.
However, they can use those funds for maintenance, uh, and managing their property.
Okay.
So, for, you know, a couple of thousand dollars worth of work, they have access to the conservation fund, which I think has well over three hundred thousand dollars in it today.
Well, no.
The, the issue that we have is that we cannot ask them or tell them to use it.
That is correct.
That's right, but they have access to over three hundred thousand dollars worth of funds.
Right.
To maintain the property that they're charged with managing.
Okay, any further discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Four-zero-zero. Information technology.
Boy, talk about jumping around here.
I know. And this line doesn't move fast.
You wanna do this one, John?
I, I can, if you like. Yeah, so anyway, so there's a few increases, a lot of it's been discussed in the past, I, I think I brought up some concerns with malware and different things that happened over the last year, so that's. For the data line, which is three forty-one, there's an increase of fifteen forty, um, that is basically run rate, for the most part. Um, we've had to increase our wireless services for the police department and fire department, we've also added additional Comcast sites, uh, in the highway to keep, continue resolving issues with the DSL services, so that's what that represents. Uh, for software support, three forty-two, the increase is four thousand eighty-one dollars, that is based on an investment we had to make in the filtering tools we talked about in the past. And, um, uh, just increasing costs around domains and different things that we, we use to support the environment. Under line six thirty, which is maintenance, uh, there is a six thousand six hundred dollar increase. Uh, part of that increase is, um, uh, related to contracts, the three contracts that we have every yearly. Um, and then, um, the additional contract, which is for the PD video and, um, audio recorders that they went in the contract, 'cause the warranty's ended the last year. Um, there is an increase, there's a request for an increase in the, you know, IT position salary from twelve to eighteen, and then.
I put the copiers in there, I don't know if you caught that.
Yeah, I did, and just, I just wanna note something, too. Um, last year, I think it was, we came forward and asked for, for a, um, to do these contracts in this line for three years. To pay up for it for three years, so we could preserve the longevity of the equipment. This is the result of not, this is going to happen, this is a result of not doing it the last couple of years ago. Now, majority of our equipment has surpassed the five-year mark, believe it or not, and is no longer gonna be supportable after two thousand and eighteen. Which means at that point, we need to think about, we, well, we have to start thinking about replacing some of the, some of the gear from the back of the back office. So, I just want, I just want you to know that, we're gonna, Troy and I are talking about what we can do with remaining funds and stuff like that to help protect this next year, but we need to look at that from, you know, as an investment next year. Seven forty, which is equipment purchases, um, the old, the big increase here is for the copiers, the two copiers that support the PD and the town have beyond their life expectancy, they're no longer supported as of this fall, actually. So, um, we'll limp through, but we're, we're suggesting, we're asking for replacement costs. This is full-loaded cost, I think Troy and I are, you know, potentially talking about leasing too, but this is the full cost, and there's a quote in there for that.
Uh, we talked about it last week, with the printer costs, about doing a lease.
Yep.
And it does seem like it's a much better way to go, because it just spreads it out.
Correct.
Instead of taking a hit every five years or.
Yeah, we, I mean, we used to lease before, and then we bought, I think we had gotten a really good deal on these two units, so we bought them outright. Um, I, I actually agree with leasing, I think it's the better way to do it, because at that point, their response when they break, they'll always have to fix it.
Right, they'll upgrade to new equipment, and then to nominal.
And the life, the life expectancies of these copiers pushes about five years.
Yeah, it is.
And it's not worth anything, after the five years.
Yeah, it's fine, and for the big, multi-functional copiers, I, I, that's the best way, for the smaller printers we have hanging around here, we buy them outright, they're a couple hundred dollar printers, it's not a big deal.
Yeah.
But these are multi, you know, these are eight thousand dollars or something like that apiece. So, this is the fully loaded cost of, you know, we decide we can do a lease, we can, I obviously change that, whatever the direction of the board. And then, um, there's the, this, the eleven hundred dollars is the yearly maintenance of the existing printers we have today. So, that's that.
I would say that I would support this budget with the number that we have today. But I would ask, as a request, that you go out and get lease pricing.
Okay.
And see if it's in advantage to us to do that.
We can do that.
And if you do, just bring it back.
I got.
I think we have the lease price, right?
Yeah, so, it would be a hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-five cents a month, per copier. So, if my math's right.
Thirty-five times two copiers, right?
Yeah.
Times twelve, thirty-four hundred sixteen dollars.
Yeah. Is that, I can't remember, is that price also including, um, supplies too?
Then I think that's built in.
That's the eleven hundred dollar, all that, right?
So, it does not include the supplies, but that's, you know, somewhere else.
Certainly, it's, financially, it's a lot better, in my opinion, to stretch it out.
I guess, I guess, so here's the thing, it's the thirty-four hundred. If you go five years, you're at eighty-five hundred plus eleven hundred times five, correct? So, call it fourteen, fourteen thousand. So, every three and a half years, through the lease program, we're basically purchasing a new.
Yeah.
I guess that's where to weigh it.
I, I agree with Steve, 'cause I've had the experience with the leasing, and it's, it's been a very positive experience at a lower cost.
Right, I mean, odds are, if they were gonna remove the new one that they brought in under a lease, because they said it was outdated.
They'd bring another one in.
We would have a new lease number that would have to come forward, but it would be more in line to this than the constant jumps all the time.
I'm, I'm, I'm certainly supportive of leasing, and I mean, I think that's a better, better deal for us. It also keeps the vendor lined up with what our needs are.
So, would you say that you would replace the, uh, the printers with the lease?
Mm-hmm.
Can we change those lines? Because then it makes the equipment lease eleven hundred dollars go away.
No, that's, that's the supply.
That's supplies, Steve.
That's, no matter what.
The supplies will still be there.
Yeah, we still have to pay for ink and paper and all that stuff, that's still gonna be there.
But if we just put down the lease at three thousand four hundred and seventeen dollars.
For the year.
Yeah. And we'll be committed, you know, for five years. But the good thing is, it becomes a standard operating cost in the operating budget, and we don't want these things after five years, and they don't want them back, they really have no value.
Right. All right, so is there a motion to amend?
Are we amending?
We're just putting the different version in.
All right, can you do that now, or?
I just, I just did it.
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
I'm refreshing, so that I can get.
Yeah, so the bottom line's one-oh-six-eighty-three.
No, it's not written, it's not done.
I'm gonna refresh it now.
I have go equipment purchase, eight thousand one hundred and seventeen for a department proposed.
There it is, one-oh-six-oh-eight-three.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's your bottom line that you want us to vote on, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve line forty-one fifty dot twenty information technology for a bottom-line number of one-oh-six-oh-eighty-three.
Moved by Mr. Perry.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four-zero-zero. Sorry, abstain, I'm sorry, so it's three-zero-zero. Three.
Zero-one.
Zero-one. Okay, it's late. Wow, sorry about that, gents.
It's still early.
For who?
Yeah, really.
I don't know, I started my day at four-thirty this morning, it's not that early.
Town ins, uh, insurance.
Hey, where are we bouncing to?
Chris, we don't, we're not gonna be able to act on it, because we don't have any of the.
Is that forty-one ninety-six?
It is forty-one ninety-six dot nine oh.
Okay, uh, so we don't have the final numbers yet, right? So, now, what are you going to do? Do we?
Well, they, the budget committee's aware that we won't have health insurance, workers' comp, our property liability.
So, it'd be crazy for us to even vote on this number then?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, personnel administration, same thing, right?
That's correct.
All right.
Uh, the only thing I wanna bring to your attention, though, in personnel administration, is we had a discussion earlier, at the start of, uh, budget, um, approval, of. If you remember, I actually put in the assumption of increasing everyone's wages by three percent, um, for two thousand and eighteen, knowing that some, you know, not knowing what the exact percentage would be, based on performance. The board asked me to take those numbers out of the operating budget and place them into a line, so I've, uh, placed them into account number ten-dash-nine-nine-zero, wage expense. And so, I put a placeholder of twenty-five thousand dollars there, and that would be for, uh, wage increases for the, the fire department and, you know, all the non-union employees. And that would also, um, cover New Hampshire State retirement impacts.
Okay, so we, this too is, uh.
So, the good news about that is that now we can go back and approve all the previous budgets that had wages in them.
Right.
That's good news about that.
Yeah, yeah, that would only be for representing two thousand and eighteen wages.
So, then, our, the personnel administration figure now, what? So then our personnel administration figure now, what?
Yeah, so we don't have, you can't vote on it, but we don't, we don't have, because of the wage increases that we're going to be talking about later tonight. It's all going to change, this whole line is going to change.
Okay, so then leave it and move on. Warrant articles default, should we just go to the regular business and we'll get to warrant articles and default budget later?
Yeah. And, yeah, and I've...
Because, and revenues, the same thing? Or are you all set with revenues?
Revenues will be, I've updated them and those will be set when we go to set our tax rate in like sometime here in October.
Okay, so why don't, well, we don't vote on those anyway.
Not usually, I, I will, usually we'll bring, I will bring, before we set the tax rate, I will try to bring preliminary numbers to you.
Okay.
Because we'll discuss, you know, overlay and those type items.
Okay. All right, so we'll defer warrant and default budget?
Do, well, so default budget, I've actually, I've not completed yet, but there's still a lot of moving parts before you can even begin to calculate that.
Okay.
But warrant articles, I still would like to go through if the board wants.
Should we go through them after our discussion of wages or are we all set going through them?
I'm fine now.
Okay. All right, so why don't we hit warrant articles and I will be right back. Mr. Perry, if you will?
You want to do warrant articles?
Sure. This takes a little...
All right, so as far as the warrant articles, what have we had that's changed?
Anything?
All right, so what I did was, because we've discussed a few times about that Albuquerque sidewalk article, and I did remove it. I just didn't sense that the, there was a lot of interest there and we wanted to try to eliminate the number of articles. So the only, oh, let me just go through it. We're holding something for the fire station bond, that's article three. Article four be the operating budget. Article five is the full-time police officer. Article six is the road improvement. Article seven is plow truck lease purchase. I have added some numbers to the table because Selectman Perry had asked if we look at, get some numbers for a six-year lease and a five-year lease. So what you have now is eight-year, six-year, and a five-year lease quote. Again, we kind of...
Six years is not too bad.
Yeah, the middle one?
Yeah. Because if you do a five, it's one fifty-nine, two seventy. If you do a six, it's one sixty-one, six forty. It's basically two thousand dollars more. But if you go up to eight, now you're jumping to one sixty-six, seven, which is an additional five thousand.
Yeah.
I, I would actually almost say to go to six.
I don't care how you cut it, he needs a new truck. That needs to go up.
And he needs a new truck more than the roads, he said too.
Yeah, can we talk about the roads?
Sure can. We got to take it out?
So, I, you know, since the last meeting I was at, I fortunately didn't get to the last one because I was stuck in a hurricane. But, you know, I know it's pretty heavy about keeping the road, this, this, this article in because we set a presence precedent, we've been doing it, people have been appreciative of it. But in light of the fact that, you know, for better or worse, St. Cobain has helped us a little bit in the roads. And so we've kind of got ahead of the curve on some things. And with the fact that we need a plow truck, which I think is probably much more important in that, in that department, but we also need a fire department. And then pulling that out makes sense. You know, I think we should pull it out, especially if Jack's in favor of that because this is more important from a department perspective. And like I said, I, I can't discount, the more I thought about it, I can't discount the fact that our PFOA issue and St. Cobain's contribu- tribulation to, the contrib- tation to the town and driving up some of these issues and some of the new roads that went in, we've got ahead of our plan a little bit. Maybe a little backwards because not in all the areas we want to focus on, but we've got to hold it, got to it. And it doesn't stop our projects. We still have our highway block grant that's fully invested for that. So I would not be against pulling it out, especially in light of the fact that Jack has also indicated that he would let go of it.
I mean, he said he wanted it still, but, but when I, when I asked him which one was more important and I said I, I have to say the truck.
Well, look at the truck price though, I mean, it's twenty-six thousand a year. That's it. You, you know what I mean? I got, I got to say that that's a, that's a small ask. I mean, even, so I don't know if it's an either-or case because we've only, we're only looking for twenty-six thousand a year for, for a new rig for them, which they have to have. What about the road improvements? I mean, that's, that's been, we've been, we've done it so many times over so many years, it's automatically in the budget now, right Troy?
No, it's not in the budget automatically. This is, this is above and beyond.
What's, well, did Jack tell me something wrong?
No, no, no. What, what he was, what he was saying is that in the current tax rate for the past several years, there is two hundred thousand dollars for road improvements in addition to the block grant. So it's sort of, that two hundred thousand dollars is built in today's tax rate. Just like the town administrator's salary is built into the tax rate.
But it's one year at a time, we continue to go back to voters and ask. And in light of the fact that we have to go forward the fire depart, we know we're going to have to go forward the fire department, we don't know what those numbers look like. That's a significant dent to that tax rate. And I think, you know, this is the part we've got to make some difficult decisions. And again, you heard me last time, I was like, no way, don't pull it out. We, we, people are used to it, they, they appreciate the fact that Jack gets this all done. And that's, that is a downside, by the way. Jack gets all this work done within the first three months of his, you know, of the season. And he's, you know, I hate to lose that traction, but in the same token, I, we can't see a fire department fall because of the tax rate. We need, we need to go to the voters and say, this is important and this is why, and yes, we are doing this, but, you know, as a side effect, we've had all these other investments in the roads because of this other event. And, you know, it's, it's put us ahead of the curve a little bit. And, you know, I think we can afford to take a year off. You know, I hope Jack, I hope Jack agrees to be, I mean, I, I assume based on the comment you made that that's what it was, but...
He won't.
No, I hate...
The greatest concern is that...
He's been in our position, he knows what we're in, our place right here.
The greatest concern that I have, you know, because I've been working with Jack pretty closely on the, on the road projects and I can tell you right now, for two hundred thousand dollars, which is the block grant, we don't accomplish a lot. That extra two hundred thousand really allows us to do a project and do it right. So if the money gets cut back, uh, Jack and I have talked about this, we, we may have to take a look at the way that we resurface the roads. You know, we do a lot of grinding now, that's, that's the best way you can do it to get the most...
Thirty-year road.
Life, a year road. We may have to look at, you know, doing a lot more shim overlay and which will shorten the life of the road.
I, I, why don't we look, and I, I brought this up several years ago and the state, the legislature has passed enabling legislation for municipalities to add an additional amount onto a car registration fee. Specifically for road maintenance. It goes nowhere but road maintenance. It has to go to that. The city of Manchester, I think they were able to do like three million dollars worth of resurfacing because they, and they just upped their fee from five dollars to seven fifty per vehicle. And that specifically, that's a dedicated fund for road resurfacing.
So you think of five dollars a vehicle, five dollars per registration. I mean, I register what, five, six, seven, seven vehicles probably?
It's five dollars a year.
So it's thirty-five dollars extra.
Right.
For me.
And, and the fund, you know, builds, and it, it goes specifically for, for road maintenance.
I do that.
Many towns avail themselves to it. It's enabling legislation.
Don't buy that, you got your five dollars for the year.
You know what?
Yeah.
Why don't we slap on more fees for everything else? I mean, now you're putting a fee on top of a tax.
Yeah.
When, when's it going to stop? Are we, are we going to make a sheet of paperwork with these because it's only twenty bucks? Are we going to do that?
Steve, the thing is, it's, it's really no different than budgeting it.
Well, do we do that in lieu, I mean, I'm not sure I'm all for fees neither, but do we do that in lieu of doing this, right? Do we add five dollars to every, every registration that helps fund this use case? And then we don't go to taxes, we don't go, again, we don't go to the property tax of that, it, it comes out of...
It's more of a user fee.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if this, if this two hundred thousand impacts you, say a nickel per thousand, that wouldn't happen anymore. Just whatever, whatever he gathers from the...
I throw it out because many municipalities do it and they're successful and I don't even know what financial impact it would make in the town. Because I have no idea how many vehicles we register or, you know, it may be a pittance.
I got next year when I'm not here.
Well, how many residents are, there's, how many homes in town? Times two?
Eighty-seven hundred residents.
Three thousand, sixty houses, I think.
So I, I figured it was about forty-five thousand dollars a year, just, just with that, without knowing how many cars people had.
The only...
I mean, it's not a lot of any stuff either, but...
The only thing I like, I've, I've looked at both the fee system and, and keeping at the property tax. I don't like adding these additional fees. And second, I think, I actually think the property tax in this case is a fairer way to collect money to maintain roads. Because you can have a business, you can have a farm, you can have apartment buildings that have an impact on roads, but they may not necessarily register cars. So if you had a business in your town that generates, I don't know, X amount of traffic a day from cars from all sides of town, they're not paying a tax for the maintenance of our roads.
That's a good point.
Property tax, make sure that everyone...
Well, it spreads it out to everybody.
It spreads it out to everyone to maintain the roads that everyone's using.
Well, actually, no. It doesn't spread out to everybody. Because you may have...
Well, at least to the property owners.
Right.
Well, the theory behind that is that if you're renting an apartment, the tax bill is figured into the rent.
Correct.
Yeah, so, I don't know.
Just, just a thought.
I would rather leave it in property tax because, one, you can write it off. Two, I moved out of Massachusetts because I'm sick of te- fees and taxes.
Welcome back to Massachusetts.
And we don't need to do that. So we also got to remember that with this road improvements, we got an additional two hundred thousand dollars this year.
Right.
From the highway block grant. We're going to get to two hundred thousand next year.
If we can hold it next year.
It may be a step back, but this is also another funding mechanism. When we get creative enough, when we start drawing up numbers for the fire department, we can implement a cost on year one to make up for the difference of the road fees that we are not going to ask for, which would more level fund. You can basically collect an extra two hundred thousand dollars without increase, increasing the taxes on year one. Just for that station.
Mm-hmm.
That was also why I asked a question to the auditors about the unassigned fund balance. You could maybe take a couple hundred thousand out of that and do the same thing. Put a chunk of money down to start with. Try to lessen the number that's going to be the burden on the taxpayer through the years.
We did that in Northwood a lot. They took a boatload of cash for the balance.
Just to, so I don't have the phone calls. I have fought for this thing to be in there ever since we created it and we've been through it a couple of years where we wanted to pull it and it got put back in. I have supported it with voters. The only reason I'm suggesting is because we have a priority problem that we're going to have, it's going to be more significant than this. And, you know, that, to me, is much more, that, that is more important than this. And again, I probably would have thought differently if St. Cobain and all the issues there didn't come ahead, come forward. And we didn't get the additional highway block grant money this year that allowed us to get ahead of the curve also. I think we can afford to take a year off and I think we just, we need to remind the voters that this is still a program we want to do and we're doing it because we're trying to minimize the impact, it's even more critical than the roads are this, this year.
If there was going to take, if there was going to be a year to take a break, I would agree that two thousand and eighteen would be the year.
That's...
And my only, my only concern was that, you know, how do we, in time, how do we start growing it back to the two hundred? And I think we'll have to take little steps. I don't think we can go next year and just jump another two hundred. We may have to start growing at fifty thousand a year to get back to the two hundred.
With that, I make a motion to remove article six, road improvements.
Mr. Perry makes a motion to remove article six. There's a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Brunel. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three, one, zero.
Now we can go at seven. Which is now six, but...
Yeah.
I recommend we go to the sixth year.
I agree.
So I said, Brent, as when you were out, it's a two thousand dollar increase basically to go from a five-year to a six-year. But it's a five thousand dollar savings to do a six-year from an eight-year. So... And I don't think twenty-seven thousand dollars is that much over the course of six years. And truthfully, going out eight years isn't good because we're probably going to have to buy another truck before then anyway.
That, that starts to get out there.
I think six years is probably the, the best for the fr- frontline kind of process. I think would be, eight years would be dragging it out too much.
All right, do I make a motion?
I make a motion to change it to a six-year lease.
I second.
Moved by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Brunel to have article seven be a six-year lease. And the cost, the twenty-six...
Twenty-six, nine...
Nine forty. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstain? Motion carries four, zero, zero.
Now, just a question on this article. Could we just take this out of the fund balance?
Yeah.
Can we ask for it out of fund balance? I mean, it's, it's twenty-seven thousand dollars.
You, you, you could, you mean, fund the first year payment or buy the truck?
Right.
Which one?
No, fu- fund the first year payment.
We could, absolutely.
And maybe year two, year three, year five, depending on how we are, but I think minimizing the tax, the tax impact next year.
I think that's an excellent idea.
No, we're going to be faced up against, we should probably consider it.
Do you move that?
Well, it's an end-of-year thing. It's kind of an end-of-year...
No, 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 no. No, because the article, they have to be worded that the first year payment should be taken from fund balance.
Yeah.
That's how you have to word it. So, and, and the tax impact is zero.
Yeah, I'll move, I'll move it. I'll move that.
Is there a second?
I'll second. Are we doing all or the first?
First, uh, my, my, my...
First, you can't do it all. You can only do one year at a time.
Why is that?
Because you don't know what fund balance is year to year.
Would we have to re-ask every year if we wanted to do that?
Yeah, because it's going to come...
So it wouldn't be worth it. So, but doing year one would because it would make it no tax burden.
That is correct.
But we need to be clear because we don't need somebody standing up at the mic saying that we're misleading people.
Right.
That it is only the first year.
Right. It, that's how it's...
The caution I have there is that if this article passes, the twenty-six, nine, forty would become part of the default budget going forward the next six years. So that's the only risk we...
How's that a risk?
Actually, no, I guess it's still being, we had permission to do the lease agreement, no.
Oh, well, wait a minute. No, you know what? You're going to have to, it, if you do that, the, the warrant article is going to have to be worded differently, Troy. Ask Laura because I know if you take from fund balance, well, it's not a bond.
A one-time...
No, it's not a bond, it's a...
They're obligating, the town meetings, it's contract, they're obligating it to a six-year lease.
It has to be the scape clause.
We're just funding it differently. I would think it'd still be default.
Yeah, we'd still go in default. But we could still go back to the voters and ask from the fund the second year, third year, fourth year out of fund.
I would just want, when I put the default budget together in two thousand and nineteen...
Making them think you got another one.
Yeah, it would be. Well, I don't, I don't, it would definitely get confused. I don't think it's trying to be misleading.
Maybe when you, when you ask either DRA or Laura that the intent is to pay one year and then successive year go into the budget or into the default budget, into the line item.
Right.
And, and how, just how to word that correctly, because there is a way to word it.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Oh, we voted on this.
We didn't vote on the move or the fund balance, but...
All in favor say aye to take it from one year, first year from fund balance.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four, zero, zero.
Eight, the library non-union wage implementation.
Third year, huh?
That's fine. Nine, human services, health agencies. The requests are in green, Troy?
So I highlighted, all the requests are in regular font. I highlighted the agencies that you funded last year in green. Because we did not fund all the agency last year.
That passed?
It did, yes.
Just with the three that we funded?
Just the three that we requested.
I recommend... I recommend, I can't talk now.
I recommend we remove it. Did I amaze you that it passed?
No, I think that we-
I've recommended to remove it every year, so-
I know. I, I, these agencies do provide us with some support that we would end up having to spend out of our welfare budgets.
So if we were gonna say that, then why don't we just put it in the budget? Because we stripped it out of the budget, because we've been trying to get the voters to not vote for it, and put it in front of them to see how, what, exactly what they think. And they keep voting it in, so why don't it go back into the budget?
I, I, we first, we, we first put out to the voters, it was always my thought that that was, they agree what we're doing, continue now going forward on the operating budget. It was our, our method of asking whether or not they supported what we were doing, so-
To me, we should add the three that are in green into the budget.
Yep.
And then get rid of the Warren article.
Is that a motion?
Sure.
Second. Moved by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Brunel-
Good luck with that one.
-to remove that Warren article and take the proposed, the three proposed amounts, five hundred to Big Brothers and Sisters, three hundred to Bridges Domestic Violence, and sixteen hundred for Meals on Wheels, and place in the, uh, regular operating budget. Further discussion?
And I think it's important to note that at deliberative, people can add additional funding into the operating budget-
Right.
-to support their desired cause, so-
Where would this go? Does this go in the welfare, where?
No, there's an actual, uh, budget. There's an account number, and there's vacant right now, so-
The human service agencies, I'll take it there.
And like, I'm glad you said that, because they, um, during deliberative session, if someone wants to stand up and try to get funding for American Red Cross, they, they can do that.
Right.
Right.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four, zero, zero.
So that way, we can remove that one.
Yep.
Time, town earned time accrueable, accrual, expendable trust fund. Current balance, ninety K, liability seventy-five.
So what I'm trying to say is that we have a balance of about ninety thousand right now, but by December thirty-first, we, we could pay out seventy-five thousand.
Could or probably?
Probably.
Probably. Probably or definitely?
I don't know, just missing words.
It all depends on how, how our ending, end of the year, you know, how we end up the end of the year, um, whether we can take out some of these liabilities from our operating budget, or we have to turn to this fund.
I recommend we knock it down to fifty thousand at least. Last meeting, I was saying twenty-five or thirty, but that didn't get a lot of traction, so I'll ask for fifty.
I'm, I'm on fifty.
So now, as you're chairing this, I'll make a motion for fifty thousand.
I'm not trying to take over for you.
Well, no, but you're continuing, and I'm okay. I'm tired.
Neither one of you-
I was just trying to help things move along.
Fund Article Ten for fifty thousand dollars.
Second. Well, I have a motion and a second, even though you just took the motion the last time.
Any discussion?
Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain. Motion carries four, zero, zero. Building Trust Fund. This is the unassigned fund balance.
The what?
No, this is the-
This, no, well, this would-
Oh.
This is proposing to put twenty-five thousand into the Building Systems Trust Fund using the unassigned fund balance.
Oh, 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 okay, well, you didn't-
Well, Article Ten was, Article Ten is the same time. We're just taking out of fund balance.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
Fine.
Yeah.
So we're good with that the way it is? We don't have to change anything?
Right.
We're done.
Yeah, and so just as you heard from the auditors tonight, if, if we go forward with these, um, you know, we'll be taking twenty-five thousand for Article Ten, fifty thousand from earned time, and the plow truck lease.
About a hundred grand.
And that's a manageable amount. We, you know-
About a hundred grand.
About a hundred grand, and it, I'm pretty confident that by the end of the year, we'll put a hundred grand back in the unassigned fund balance.
Hence the reason why. We lower it down, so we're more like a hundred. Still have money to play with.
Okay, we're done with warrants.
Did you, did you vote on it?
Yeah. No, we didn't, because we said we're gonna leave it the same.
We're all set.
Yeah, it's all set.
Didn't we vote on it?
We haven't voted-
I thought you amended it to fifty thousand. Did you vote?
That was the one before.
That was the one before.
That was Article Ten.
Twenty-five, sorry.
So we're not gonna vote on support or denial until we have a full board.
Correct.
We were just, we were just approving the audits where they are.
And, and they don't need these yet. I, I mean, you know, we're-
What, what I would do is send, send the drafts to them, say, know what we're looking
Sure.
at- And how we're gonna fund them, and then-
Yep.
They don't, they're not gonna vote on it until after we vote anyway.
Right.
No. At least they get a good heads up, because, so everything else here is, um, we're pretty solid on, um. Yeah, okay. Just gonna change the plow truck to fund it from the unassigned fund balance, and that's it.
Okay, and default budget will take up later?
Yeah. I'll start working on the fire station bond, even though we don't know the amount. Um, I'm not sure where the bond article goes, if it goes before the operating, I know there's some laws on it about where it goes, and we should, I should be able to get some, uh, legal language that, you know, from DRA to have that all set up as a template.
Okay. Let's go on to Jeff Lane update and irrigation well.
All right, well, I put some notes-
I assume that is, uh, Mr. Schaefer, you're taking, you're gonna run with this?
Well, yeah, Troy and I can do this together, but just, um, so you can follow in the comment section down below, I, um, I put in our ins and outs financially right now. Uh, but the well thing, Troy and I have been working on, we got our second bid, our second price sheet, and in looking at it, I mean, we both seem a little bit, um, I don't know, unsure that northeast is necessarily the lowest price. Um, to the best of our ability, we've come up with sixty-five hundred dollars for a well, and that's, y- y- you just need to see the way these guys price their work. It's like, the, I mean, Troy will tell you, it's, it's, it's like a, worse than a menu on a restaurant, because it's like, there's so many circumstances and dollar amounts for those circumstances, and of course, you can't tell what you're gonna get. Um, we did consult with, um, a little bit with Kevin. He, he happened to be in the, in Town Hall that day. We talked to him, he had a little bit of input, too. So, um, so we need to get a well going over there right away, and, uh, this is what we have for pricing.
You were hoping to have one in before this meeting.
Yeah. Well, you told me I couldn't, because I had to do this.
You said that there was an option that it could be done for nothing.
That didn't happen. That's why we went, ended up in this route two weeks ago. But anyway, um, yeah, the, the, the zero, the zero-dollar option was, they're very busy. They can't handle, um, doing this right now, so, so anyway, so, knowing, you know, let's say northeast is the lowest at sixty-five, thirty-five. If you go down to the bottom of the page in the notes, um, we have, um, sixty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-two dollars left in impact fees, seventeen thousand, eight hundred fourteen dollars we fundraised for it, leaving us a total remaining dollar amount of eighty-three thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars. Um, right now, the fence is forty-five thousand, nine hundred seventy-seven, which we haven't paid yet. Power raking of the field to get all the grass off, all the weeds off the field, uh, a few weeks ago was, uh, one thousand, two hundred, I mean, one, two thousand, five hundred dollars. We're gonna say the well is six thousand, five hundred. The irrigation is gonna cost ten thousand dollars, and that's with free labor. I'm gonna get a bunch of contractors in there to help me with it. Um, the shed and concession stand is another five thousand dollars. Concrete for that, and the concrete for the dugouts, we're not sure yet. So, we have an expenditure of sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred seventy-seven dollars, leaving us approximately fourteen thousand dollars to finish the fields once we've, uh, completed these tasks.
So my question to you is, how much did we give you originally?
Eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, I wanna say that. So that's, so you have eighty-three thousand left right now?
But the seven, well, yeah, I have sixty-five thousand of what you gave us.
He raised.
We fundraised seventeen thousand, eight hundred dollars. So we have two different accounts going. We have a revolving account for seventeen thousand, eight hundred, and then we have the impact fees of sixty-five thousand, eight hundred sixty-two left.
Okay. And how much do we have in impact fees now for recreation, outside of this account? Because this was supposed to be earmarked funds, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and, and we stipulated with recreation that we can go back and ask them for more impact fees.
Oh, I understand that. What I was trying to do is just make sure of how much you were giving, uh, given originally.
Okay, all right.
Because it was pretty much everything that was there.
Yes, yeah, with the exception of five hundred dollars at the time, but it was just, it wasn't through their impact fee account, it was through their sawmill, uh, development account.
So I sent out an email about a week ago. We have nine thousand, five hundred dollars unassigned-
Yep.
-in the impact fee account, rec- impact fees.
Because at the time, they had eighty, say eighty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars, and they gave us eighty-nine thousand, they kept five hundred, but it was just being moved from the sawmill project.
Well, they were releasing, they were releasing our original decision to give them that amount of money. That's what, that's what they were doing. It wasn't-
Well, that doesn't make any sense either, because when sawmill was done, we gave them X amount of dollars from what was available.
Yeah.
And then everything that was collected from that point on was supposed to be separate.
Yeah.
So I don't understand why they would have to release it from them to move it to this one.
They had to make a vote to move it from sawmill to Jeff Lane.
The, no, the vote-
They don't make that vote.
No, the vote, the vote, their vote was to go, go forward and not say that they would release whatever remaining funds were, five hundred dollars. There was still, there was still money left in the project fund that we originally approved.
Got it.
So they, they made a vote and said, we just need to maintain five hundred dollars to finish, I think it was the shed.
Yeah, that shed, right.
So we came back here, they came forward to, to support the Jeff Lane project, so we used those funds plus whatever else was in the account to fund that, minus the five hundred dollars.
Yep.
And I think we set it up so that Phase Two can come back and ask for additional impact fees for Phase Two. It was all spelled out that way.
Yeah, and we've done a great job, like, you know, finding the best way of doing things. Unfortunately, it's taken a little bit longer than I wanted to.
But it's not gonna be playable next year.
Don't say that. Do not say that.
They're not gonna be playable next year if you don't have grass down already.
Yeah, I know. I know. I mean, it's, it's not even funny. I mean, I'm doing this by myself. I'm like a one-man show, trying to build these stupid things, and, uh, yeah, it's, it's frustrating as all hell. We went all summer long, I watched the weeds grow on it, because we were waiting for fence estimates to come in, and it just pisses me off. I mean, honestly, it's, I'm infuriated over the fact that we might not play on it next year, and it's kind of rubbing salt in it.
What if, what if you, um, expedited things and started just bidding it out, getting it done now?
Well, that's what we're trying to do. That's why I'm asking you if we can do this well.
Well, originally, when you asked last time, you said that you hoped to have the well in the next week or two.
But Plan B would be-
And if that didn't work out, then you'd move forward, so that's why I said, being two weeks out, I didn't think we were really holding you up.
Well, I mean, I'm not saying you held us up, but I mean, we had to wait till today to do this.
So, there is money in impact fees to take care of this?
Yes. Yes, and I just need the approval to spend. I'm gonna, I don't know, Troy, you-
Well, we'd kind of, well, we'd like to have, um-
Up to nine thousand dollars.
Yeah, like to have up to, just, just in case, there's, we're gonna have to interview, um, northeast to make sure their, their number's solid.
Okay.
Um, I, looking at their proposal, I think that number's right, but it just, that big, there's a big difference in pricing, and I don't know what it is. It's struggling, that delta.
Are there a motion to, um, spend up to nine thousand dollars in impact fees for the irrigation system?
No, because what I'm gonna ask is this, before we do it, is why, if we've already assigned the money for the fields, I thought, when he asked this last week, I seriously thought you were asking for an additional amount of money for these things to be done.
No.
We haven't bid out each step of this project. He's supposed to manage the project and get it done. Well, the, the only thing that really, what we brought to you last, the last time you met, we already had approved funding from the Board of Selectmen. What we came to you was to ask for a waiver from the purchasing policy. That was the only thing we were asking for, because we wanted the sole source, the well. The Board didn't wanna do that, they wanted us to go out and get at least one more quote.
And you were gonna go with Skilling's last time.
Right, so we went out and got one more quote. So really, what we're sitting here asking tonight is if you would still waive the purchasing policy, given the fact that we have two quotes, not three.
I make a motion to waive the purchasing policy for the Jeff Lane irrigation well in the amount up to nine thousand, thirty-five dollars.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion.
I added the thirty-five dollars, because if you add the two numbers up, that's where you get it. I don't want you to be thirty-five dollars short and not be able to do it.
Take it out of my pocket.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four, zero, zero.
I abstain.
Or did you abstain?
Yeah, I abstain.
Three, zero, one. Okay. Next item.
And thank you. You're welcome.
The union sidebar, is that next?
If he ties a flat afterwards, you'll know why.
Okay, so, we've, um, we've met with the, the Board of Selectmen and discussed the proposed sidebar agreement. We had a, one or two issues, I think, we wanted to make sure we had clarification on with the union, and, um, we have resolved that. We have, we understand when this agreement will become effective. Um, and both sides, the negotiating sides, have come to an agreement. This, this is, uh, I see no reason why the Board wouldn't, uh, want to approve this agreement.
We're pleased, this, this mitigates the arbitration or the grievance process. They've dropped the grievance and the arbitration, and we've basically, uh, came to resolution.
So, just a question. Their, the union reps, they, they reviewed this, they agree with the document, because we're-
Yes.
I know in the past, we signed one, and there was still some errors in the document, and we just took the prepared.
No, this, this is, this is coming from their union representative.
They send it over for us.
Send, they send it to us.
Send it to us, okay.
So I'll entertain a motion to accept the sidebar agreement that's been negotiated with the police union.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Perry, seconded by Mr. Brunel. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries four, zero, zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
How much fuel gets burned per hour when a cruiser's running?
Does, does an acre be increased that?
Depends on the price of fuel.
How much fuel gets burned? Does half a gallon get burned?
Oh, sorry.
If the car just sits at idle?
Probably.
In an hour?
Probably. Not a half gallon, I'm sure. It's probably-
Probably more than that. Probably more than that.
No, I'm sure it's probably less than that, I believe.
I think it's actually, based on the last estimate we've done, I think it was actually, I thought it was less.
Less than half a gallon?
Why, why the question?
No, less than a gallon, I thought.
Less than a ga, it better be less than a gallon. We're collecting two dollars and sixty eight cents per hour bill to cover related maintenance and fuel costs. If we're burning a gallon an hour by the car sitting there, we're losing money.
I, I thought you were, so, I'm, well, there was a, there's a, I guess someone questioned it, someone has been questioning, well, my cars are always running, and the, you know, the department's responding.
No, I'm just asking, cause I'm reading this and thinking, boy.
Yeah, I can't speak to the detailed cars, unfortunately, if the cars aren't running, the lights can't work.
Right.
Lot of fight for a little money.
Right, cause I know there was a question about why on duty, frontline cars are running when they're on duty, and it's really about setup time and being able to respond. If they shut them down, it takes them several minutes to get things functioning, computers, the radar, all that stuff, so.
Well, and the Hudson Litchfield News wanted to do an article about that, because he felt like everybody should know why. Police cruisers are always left running. Um, Chief O'Brien hasn't returned his call, I don't know if you've returned his call, cause he did leave a message with you.
They, I think, I think the captain has responded to that.
Oh, has, has he?
Cause I, I, yeah, cause I was asked for some input, so I gave some input from the technical side of it.
Okay, okay, good.
No, it's a good, I think it's a valid question, people should not understand why.
I think it's a great thing for them to, you know, I didn't know, why, you know, other people probably didn't know either.
I don't have a message.
Don't you get a message from him?
Nope, I did speak with him. And, and this came up in a conversation, he told me he was doing a story on it, but, um, I think I just answered the phone when he, when he called me.
Like I said, I think, I think the department's responding to it, cause like I said, I was, I was asked around the technical side of it, and if you think about it, and we've defended this, we've, we've defended this before with budget and so on. You know, a hundred degrees out, cars parked in the parking lot, you go to jump in and respond, now you're, now you're sweating, right? But in tip, everything else, getting the car started, it really takes that car from startup time, five minutes to get ready to roll. Between starting the car up, firing the computer up, syncing, uh, getting the radar going, and the camera system engaging, cause it goes through all itself. Let me turn on, you know, turn on a TV or whatever, it takes a little while for it to come up. That all factors times X, so.
That was an eye opener, I didn't realize how much technology got screwed up by shutting it off, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, last item before we, is the, uh, the committee that I emailed you all about. Troy, do you?
Yeah, sure, so, um, we've, you know, the fire chief, myself, the architect, we've been working, um, we've gone out for proposals, from construction managers, we received six proposals. We've gone through and reviewed them, I think we've narrowed it down to four, uh, that we'd like to do a follow-up interview with. And we reached out to Chairman Lemire, saying, you know, we'd like to have some other folks involved in this process. So, I guess officially right now, we're, I'm not sure if we're gonna call this a committee, but, um, I think we're gonna bring it back to you as a, um, so there's a more of a formal way to adopt it as a standing committee to go through this process. But as of right now, uh, we have these individuals that, uh, have said that they would be willing to assist us in selecting the general contractor.
I just thought it was, um, important to get some, outside some public input, and at that point, then they could go out and share the input, the information they receive with others. The more information we get out to everybody, the better.
And when we meet, we're gonna meet next, uh, uh, Tuesday, October the third. I will talk with all of them in the room, ask them, you know, what, what do they, do they wanna be on this project from start to finish? And, um, we're just looking for some input from them, and then I'll bring it back to this board, uh, for a formal adoption to create the, the committee.
Perfect. Okay. Administrator report. Okay, thanks Troy.
Yeah, we've already made the announcement. No, that's good, it was better to do it when there's people here. Um, but just, anyone that's still watching us at home, uh, just wanted to remind you that the town clerk's office will be closed Friday, October the sixth. It's closed Columbus Day and, uh, Tuesday, October the tenth. And, um, Columbus Day is obviously a holiday, but the Friday and the Tuesday is due to the state updating their software system, which is gonna cause all the town clerk offices to be closed throughout the state, so. Last time they scheduled this about, I don't know, last February, I think, and it went wrong.
Right.
So we quickly were able to get word out to everyone that we were, would be reopening Tuesday morning. I hope that they have everything worked out this time, and, and the scheduled shutdown will work, and the system will be updated, up and running Wednesday morning. I've been informed that all the, uh, the, the fall paving, that, of the Penachuck, uh, project roads that are being done this fall, almost complete. For anyone that doesn't have the driveway completed yet, that's actually planned, they will be coming back to, uh, to do the driveway work. Um, but with the weather that we've had, everything's going really well, and I, I understand that this should be done, the paving work should be done, um, hopefully by the end of next week, just done, you know, so. I haven't really received a lot of complaints from the neighborhoods, so the work must be going really well. I also received word today that the septic plan, uh, for the fire station has been approved by New Hampshire D E S, so this plan is the one that's the, the backup plan in case things fail, we know that we already have a design plan that's been approved by New Hampshire D E S, so. That's good news, that's in place, and then, um, they will now start begin, uh, constructing, um, a line that will go to the existing leach field at the old town hall. And, uh, I just wanted to run it past the board, but, uh, Jack has advised me that his part-time person, uh, has put him on notice that he no longer is gonna be working the thirty-two hour position. He does wanna remain sort of on an on-call basis, when, you know, if Jack needs him for any specialty work, cause he's pretty handy with, uh, uh, doing radio work and mechanical work, that he would be willing, if he's available, to come in and help. Uh, but Jack wants to proceed forward and advertise, um, to replace the position. So it's not a budget item, it's, it's something that's in the budget, we wanna move forward and try to recruit another thirty-two hour part-time position. Which, hopefully, if we're able to find someone, uh, this individual will be able to assist us in plowing during the winter months, whereas the previous part-timer really didn't, uh, uh, have any interest in, in helping out.
So the board should approve that?
It's in the budget, I just wanted to bring it, make you aware of it, and if there was any concerns.
You should have said the hiring, Troy.
Well, it's the hiring.
We don't get involved in part-time hiring.
What do you mean, we don't get involved?
We haven't, we've never, this gets me, we've never get involved with a hu, part-time employee down at the recycling center. In the past, Jack has hired people, we've never been involved. The clerk hires people, we're not involved.
Okay, the, the thing is.
If we make a, make a policy that says we have to be, then it's great, but we haven't been.
This is our job.
All I'm saying is, practice has been not, so if we're gonna do that, we should do it across the board, including the clerk's office.
Well, I mean, we, we let them do the job, but the approval should come from this board.
Never, I've never seen an approval come across for the recycling department, for the clerk's office. Or, again, I, I, if we're gonna do it, we should make it consistent across the board.
I, I really believe, as the personnel, we, we don't care, I don't, you know, I mean, they can hire who they want, I just think it's incumbent upon us to, to approve this.
We had nothing to do with hiring the second guy at the fire station.
I know.
We had nothing to do with hiring anybody, other than, any, we've never been involved in anyone's hiring, except for that office.
This is, this was my argument a month ago, when I was making the complaint that these are supposed to be our employees.
Yeah, we should.
And we've had nothing to do with it.
We've been involved, John, I've been involved in this, I've sat here and we hired people.
Who?
Can you find out, either through?
We hire them.
Just if we should be, Troy?
We don't hire them neither, they present them to us.
We do hire them.
Part timers, they present to us, we make a motion to approve. Full timers, they bring it to, into us to hire.
Right.
No, they've already made a decision, what they've done is they've brought them forward so that we can acknowledge their police rights to be able.
Oh, no, no, John, oh, no, no, they cannot hire. They cannot hire, they are not the hiring authority.
My only, my only, my only, my only, my only point was, if we're going to do it, which I'm not against, we need to be consistent across the board. We can't cherry pick what we're gonna do, what we're not gonna go do.
Fine, I'm okay with it, but, can I ask you please, and I'm, I'm almost positive, Laura will say, this board is the personnel authority. Could you ask her what we should be doing? And if, you know, we're hands-off, fine, but this board should know, and, and should be the approval.
For all departments, including the fire department and the police department.
Absolutely, I, no issue with that.
Yeah, we do, I mean, you know, like in the cable department, they, they hire individuals, you know, so there's a lot of part-time hiring going on, call firefighters, but I'll find out.
Can you find out if we should be?
That's your question.
And, and if she says we don't have to, not a problem. I really don't wanna abrogate our legal responsibility.
Well, the reason I put this here, I wasn't really thinking about hiring, I just wanted to put the ad out in the paper and wanna make sure you're aware of it.
I saw the ad, and the thing, it needs to be done, it's been something that's been on the list for a while, so.
If you want my opinion, he should hire another part timer.
Yeah, I, I think it should be hiring two, and that's, at, at that point, we've gotta come forward and put in a budget.
Not for thirty-two hours, but another part timer for less hours, I think he needs more help.
He has budget for it, he's had other part timers there.
All right, anything else, Troy, yours?
I have.
Selectmen reports, gentlemen?
I've been missing for three weeks, so.
Yeah, so, well, how was, now how about your report for Florida?
It was, it was windy and wet.
It was wet.
Actually, the vacation was awesome, but the rest of it was windy and wet, and then travel nightmares and all that stuff.
Mr. Schaefer, you have anything?
You pretty much saw everything, basketball courts, riverfront access, you know, recreations, busy.
Okay.
Making friends all over the place.
Mr. Perry?
Uh, planning board met and had their first meeting of the committee, the, um,
Master plan?
Master plan committee, and I was unable to make it on that day due to work.
Okay. Okay. Anything else, any other business? Next meeting is scheduled for?
Yeah, that's a good question, um, Columbus Day, we're scheduled to be off.
Right.
And that's the day we're scheduled to have a selectmen's meeting.
All right, you gotta come in.
So, I don't know.
How about we meet next Monday instead?
And I have a conflict next Monday.
Okay.
So we'll have to work it out, I mean, I don't know if I have anything going on Columbus Day, so.
Or do you wanna meet?
I'm not coming in on Columbus.
You're not coming in on Columbus.
I have very few days off, and I have.
You have it off?
And I'm traveling that day, so I'm not gonna be able to make the meeting on the.
And I hope to be walking the end of that day, we'll see.
So we're gonna, I'll work it out with, we'll work, and then.
Okay, how about the last two Mondays in October?
Twenty-third and the thirtieth.
I can definitely give you the normal meeting.
Yeah, the normal meeting's fine, I'm okay with the thirtieth at this point, too.
And what's the Monday before?
It's five.
Yeah, we can just move it to the sixteenth instead.
Yeah, what about the sixteenth and then the thirtieth?
Sixteenth and thirtieth is fine.
Well, we're, we're meeting on the twenty-third normally, right?
Well.
Or sixteen and twenty-third.
Or you could do sixteen and twenty-third, or you can just.
Wow, that would work out good.
All right, why don't we do that, sixteen and twenty-third? Sixteenth and twenty-third, and we'll notify everyone, okay? Okay, uh, the last item of business is a non-public session. And we will go into non-public, if I get a motion and, and a vote, we will go in to discuss compensation, and we will come out only to adjourn. So at this point, um, I will ask for a motion first to go into non-public session under RSA ninety-one A colon three two A for compensation.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Perry.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Schaefer. Roll call, Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Brunel?
Yes.
And I say yes. Okay, we are in non-public session, we will only come out to adjourn. And I thank you all, uh, for watching tonight, and those of you that came in for the public hearing.